Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor, Skip Henderson. City manager, Isaiah Hughley. Byron Hickey, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Joanne Kogle, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, District 9. At-large counsel, Travis Chambers. District 10, at-large counsel, Sandra Davis, clerk of counsel and city attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Good morning and welcome to the December 10th city council meeting. We're glad to have you all with us as we conduct the city's business. We'll begin as we always do and by asking Reverend Colleen Cook of New Hope Presbyterian Church of Columbus to come forward and return thanks for us. Welcome ma'am.
Good morning. Loving God, you turn the seasons each with its own blessings and challenges. Thank you for this season and this day, a new opportunity to be faithful and fruitful. As we celebrate the holidays, make us mindful and consider those who face them alone. As many traditions celebrate with lights, help each of us to discern light in the darkness and to turn toward it in hope and reverence. We pray for peace, peace for our city, a peace which as Dr. King said, is not merely the absence of violence, but rather the presence of justice. May we all have enough, may we all know that we are enough. We pray for those who serve the city as law enforcement officers, keep them safe and effective. We pray for our houses of worship and for our faith leaders. May our worship of you magnify your majesty, may our ministries bring healing and growth in your love. We pray for our city leaders, especially the mayor and his staff and these council members who give generously of their time and wisdom to make decisions that affect all of us. Bless this meeting, keep it orderly, kind and courageous. Keep the council mindful of those in Columbus who have the least, the least money, power and influence. May they be considered and honored. We pray all these things to God who is both mighty and merciful. Amen.
Amen. Reverend Cook, thank you so much for coming down here and sharing those thoughts with us this morning. We appreciate very much your prayers. Thank you ma'am. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business, we have a quorum, so we will, I'll ask for approval of the minutes from November 19th. Motion and a second to approve those minutes. Are there any edits, any changes need to be made? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving those minutes say aye.
Aye.
If there are any opposed? Okay, they're good. We're gonna shuffle around the mayor's agenda just a little bit because we got some folks that need to get back in the courtroom. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna call our recorders court judge to the podium. We are gonna pull this up from, where is the city manager, is it on your agenda? It's on from the city attorney's agenda, item five, and we've got a couple of new recorders. And matter of fact, after they're approved, let them stand up there too, if they want to say a few words.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of council, thank you very much for having me.
Hang on. There we go.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me today. As you all know, beginning in January, we're gonna be running three courtrooms full-time. We'll have the new annex, which will be all patrol traffic. We'll be running courtroom two with Georgia State Patrol, motor squad, environmental and code inspections and principal summons, courtroom one preliminary hearings. So, given that we have a need, and so we're requesting appointment of three pro temp judges, Jennifer Dunlap, Sean O'Hara and Steve Hodges, that we are asking, they're all are very competent attorneys, been practicing for quite a while, have the experience and the practical knowledge to serve our community very well. I have full faith in all three of them, and ask that you approve them today as pro temp, to serve as pro temp attorneys in Recorder's Court of Columbus.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, well, welcome, thank you. If you would, we'll indulge you for just a few quick seconds if you want to say anything. Jennifer, Sean.
So we have Jennifer Dunlap.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Appreciate very much the appointment. Thank you very much for your time. Nice to meet everybody.
Sean O'Hara.
Yeah, Sean O'Hara, I don't have very much to say either, just appreciate the time this morning. It's remarkable what Judge Renee's been able to do at Recorder's Court lately, especially with the case load they have, so we appreciate it, looking forward to it.
Steve Hodges.
Thank y'all for the appointment. Judge Renee's doing a great job over there and I look forward to helping.
We appreciate you willing to serve the citizens of Columbus, thank y'all very much. And Judge, thank you, y'all do such a good job over there. We appreciate what the council committee on Recorder's Court has been doing and working with y'all.
Their insight was great and we appreciate all y'all's support, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the mayor's agenda, we have a proclamation for, you know, one of the great things is we are able to attract good talent, sometimes in spite of ourselves. But the sad part about that is when that talent moves on. And Rosa Evans is gonna be retiring. While we're happy for her, we're certainly sad that you're no longer gonna be at the head of Metro. So I'm gonna turn it over to Councilor Chambers. And Ms. Evans, would you come forward, please? Anybody from your group that wants to come stand behind you, we'd welcome them up here as well.
So Ms. Evans, let me just say thank you for your leadership and your commitment and your dedication to the city. I've heard only great things about you and you definitely would be missed, but you deserve it. I hope you have a great retirement. But I want to read this proclamation to you. And the proclamation reads, whereas Ms. Rosa L. Evans began her journey with the Columbus Consolidated Government Metro Transit System in 1988 as a bus operator, and whereas Rosa has consistently demonstrated exemplary skills, dedication and commitment to her work, positively impacting Metro and public transit within our community, and whereas Rosa's contributions as a public servant led her to, led her success and growth as she held positions of transit supervisor, ADA coordinator and transit manager. And whereas in 2016, Rosa was appointed to the position of Metro's director to further demonstrate her passion, expertise and leadership, and whereas after 36 years of dedicated service to Columbus, Rosa were retired to a life of adventure, travel and spending quality time with her family and friends. And whereas in celebration of her retirement, we dedicate the day of December the 12th, 2024, as a day of gratitude, best wishes and remembrance for Rosa's achievements. And whereas on Thursday, December the 12th, 2024, Metro will be holding a public celebration from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM at the Metro Transfer Center, 814 Linwood Boulevard. Now therefore, I B H Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Thursday, December the 12th, 2024, as Rosa L. Evans Day. Congratulations.
Rosa, you want to say anything?
Yes, sir. Good morning to you all and thank you, Mayor, to the members of council, to you, Mr. City Manager, to everyone here. I'm usually never at loss with words, but I am, I think I'm at loss with words this morning. I am truly grateful for having the opportunity to serve this city for 36 years. The first thing I know I need, that goes without saying, I have to give honor to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I could not have done it without him. He has ordered my steps each and every day. There have been days that I've gone home. I am grateful that I have a family who have supported me in all the years. They understood what I had to do, but they never gave up. I have a team at Metro that gave me the drive to want to come back every day because they stood by my side. Even when I didn't make the right decisions, they were there for me to help guide me the right way. To all of this, all of the citizens, the customers that ride the buses, they have supported me. And they are the reason why I wanted to do this job because I, starting as a, started as a bus operator, I saw the need in Columbus for public transit. I saw elderly people, senior citizens getting up, walking from their neighborhoods in the rain, in the cold, in the dark, to get a bus. And I wanted to contribute to helping to make life easier for them. But I gotta go back a little bit and, and I won't take up a lot of time because I can say what I need to say on Thursday, and I hope to see some of you there at the celebration at 3:00 PM. But I have to go back to when I came to Metro in 1988. I had driven a school bus in Texas, but I had never driven a city bus. Quite different, totally different. When I applied for the job, I wasn't sure I was gonna get it, but our city manager, Isaiah Hughley, saw something in me. And I have to say to him, thank you, because you saw something in me and you helped to groom me to the person that I am in terms of my professional career. You pushed me and you said during the time I worked at Metro, we will cross every T and dot every I. We will leave no stone unturned. We do things to perfection. And I appreciate that so much because that helped me along the way. When situations came up, I knew I had to have the facts. I had to have everything. And so I do thank you so much because as I said, I hadn't done anything, really. This is the first real job I've ever had. So I thank you so much for seeing something in me and helping me to grow. I can remember when you would send me to meetings and I'm like, what, what, what am I? But it helped me to learn and helped me to know how to represent Metro because I saw other people there and I watched them. And I thank you so much, sir, Ms. Goodwin. I sat under you, I know, for at least 10 years. So I've sat under three directors, but Ms. Goodwin, you pushed me. You really pushed me. When I tell you, if you ever want to meet someone who is hands-on, all hands-on deck, that's Ms. Goodwin. She's gonna get in there, she's gonna show you what she want, how she wants it, and she's gonna push you. She is the one who pushed me to go back to school to get my degree. I had gone to school, but I didn't finish. I had some things that happened in life that kept me from finishing, but she pushed me to do it. And I thank you so much because you led by example. I appreciate everything that you've done. And I want to say last but not least, and I wish she could be here, Sandra Hunter was my predecessor and I appreciate everything that Sandra did as well to help me on my journey. Sandra was one that you had to give account for every penny that you spent. When it came to the state, federal and local regulations, you had to have it right. So I had to. I had the opportunity to sit under three directors and I, I'm sorry for taking so long, but I do appreciate them because if it were not for the leaders and all of you, I would not be here today to say what I'm saying. 36 years feels like, you know, it went so fast. I enjoy being a public service servant for this community and I appreciate everything that you have done, this council, all of the projects that we've done, and I won't name them because it's too many to name. Without your approval and just understanding and trusting me in this position, it would not have come to fruition. And so I thank you so much.
Rosa, one of the most critical things that a government provides is transportation to folks. It gets them to the hospital, it gets them to daycare, it gets them to work. And it's also one of the most difficult responsibilities to juggle because you're dealing with so many governments, it makes it tougher. But you've done an incredible job and as the city has changed and evolved, the transportation has had to change and evolve. And it has changed a lot under your leadership and you have always done a good job of putting the people first, trying to figure out how you best accommodate their needs to go from point A to point B and back again. So, so thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. I just want to say congratulations to Rosa Evans. I commend you and thank you for your 36 years of service with the city of Columbus. I remember the exact day you came into my office for an interview some 36 years ago, and I did see something in you and hired you as a bus operator and, and then kept pushing you because I did see something in you, similar to what I saw in a drill short and, and I could point to people who started at the lowest level in this organization like Rita Hollowell. But you went back to school, I pushed you, Deputy City Manager, then Assistant Director and now, and then later Director pushed you to go and get your education. We told you you could move through the ranks of the organization, but it was gonna require that you have education. And you went back, you, and you went to school, you stopped and it was off and on as it was with drill short. But you did it. And when you did it, you were able to move to those higher level positions and, and ultimately you were appointed, I had the opportunity to bring you forward, to appoint you as Metro Director. So I hired you as bus operator and had the chance to bring you forward and appoint you as Metro Director. I'm proud of your accomplishment. I'm proud of what you have done at Metro, your leadership, the team that you've built. And just commend you, thank you, and know that you will enjoy your retirement, you will travel and do some of the things that you've been wanting to do for a long time. So congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Councilor Huff?
Good morning.
Good morning.
You weighed heavily on my mind this morning. I've been working a lot for the last 10 days now, so I've had about three hours of sleep. And I wanted to be here to, to see you personally before you left today. You and I had a conversation some time ago, that's why it weighed heavily on my mind, about work schedules, events in your life and how to keep it going. And I thought about all of that this morning, that if you were able to push through so many of the things you pushed through along your journey here, at least I could do is get up and be here this morning to tell you congratulations for a job well done. I remember city manager mentioned you being a bus driver. There were two of you, both female, that could drive a bus better than anybody I'd ever seen. So I remember you handling us on a convention down at the Trade Center and everybody, well, can you do this? And you're like, if you just please sit down. I got it, I got it. And you took care of us. But your friendship before then, I appreciate it. Some people don't know that you were involved where there was real good food to be eating back in the day. Yeah, in the neighborhood, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate you and I wish you well. If there's anything I can ever do for you, please let me know, okay? Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Councilor Davis? Rosa, it's a, it's a good day and the city manager's right, we're proud of you. We, we really are. And I've watched you over the years and, you know, your service to the community has been nothing less than amazing. And I'm glad you didn't give up. And I wish you just could keep going and telling us more and more stories because that's promising, inspiring what you just said to us. And that just enhances, enhances and speaks to your leadership and who you are because there's a lot of young people out there that just heard what you said. And they needed to hear that. And that's leadership and guidance. And that's the value that you can hang on to. We all need to hear that over and over and over because at some point in time, we all, you know, question what happened the day before and what are we gonna do the following day? That's sometimes life, that journey, but you never gave up. You served our community well, outstanding job. I've watched all the projects over the years. It's been incredible, the journey, and I just wanted to say thank you. And, you know, I'm starting to think now, the time I've been on council, I've seen a lot of wonderful people, including yourself, that are retiring, moving on, and I'm like, well, what are we gonna do? You know, I'm gonna see a lot of faces I've never seen before, but, and certainly you're up there and the citizens can be thankful for people like you because you are a model employee. And we're seeing more and more of the ones that are retiring and moving on are model employees. And they're great to work with and you've been great to work with, and I just wanted to say that and share that with you.
Thank you, Councilor Davis.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Rosa, congratulations. I remember representing you when an unnamed attorney was trying to make your life difficult and we prevailed in that action, but I, I knew then that you were gonna be representing Columbus and you represent the best in public service and we congratulate you on your career.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fay.
Rosa, good luck. Come around and let us thank you one more time.
All right. This is my family in Metro, all of them, every one of them. This is my daughter, Kiki, my great grandson and my granddaughter, Heaven, and everybody else, they're Metro employees and I thank them, I love them so much. I'm gonna miss these folks. Great, you good? Thank you.
Bittersweet day. All right, next we've got a, actually a presentation by former House Dean and the current U.S. Representative to the 78th United Nations General Assembly, but today he's here to talk about one of the biggest things to hit Columbus every year and that's Fountain City Classic. Mr. Smirey, good to see you, sir.
Thank you very much. Before Rosa Evans leaves, I just wanted to say, she was in my notes, but for 10 years or more, she handled our transportation for the last 10 to 15 years and, and she did a superb job and, and it's because of that, I know my friend, Howard Pillant, told me, don't ever use this quote again, but if you ever see a turtle sitting on the fence post, you know that he or she didn't get that by themselves. And she's one of the reasons that the Fountain City Classic has been successful. So I just wanted to say that to her personally and to say thank you for, for all that you've done. Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to be on the public agenda. I appreciate that. And to Mayor Pro Tem Gary Allen and to all the members of the city council, thank you all for allowing me to come, city manager, city attorney and, and all the members of the staff here. I come today as Chair of the Fountain City Classic just to say thank you, just like you just quoted, Councilman Davis, just wanted to say thank you in very simple terms. And before I get started, I do want to congratulate Byron Hickey as a new member of the city council, congratulate you and to Travis Chambers, I want to congratulate you on your election and to the members of the city council, to both of you, I just want to say thank you for your service and for being here this morning. And to all of the members of the council, thank you very, very much. The city council has been very, very supportive of the, of the Fountain City Classic and we are approaching our 35th year in the city of Columbus. And I remember going to see Mayor Jernigan when we first started talking about the classic in 1989. And of course, we held our first game in, in 1990. And since that time, we have been very, very fortunate to have the support of, of the city of Columbus and I have chaired it and since then, except, and I remember when both presidents came to Columbus to talk with me about the Fountain City Classic, I agreed to do it for one year. And here I am 34 years later, still there. And, but, but I have a passion for higher education. I consider education as the escalator of mobility. It is the key, dog keys, to being a more productive citizen in a challenging society. And, and for that, I just have a passion. When I chaired the University System of Joy, the Higher Education Committee in the House, it's just something that I believe in, in retaining our intellectual capital because it's the key to our workforce here in, in the state of Georgia. So I'm really, really passionate about, about the subject matter regarding all HBCUs in our country. The Fountain City Classic is co-chaired by Gene Lynn, a graduate of Albany State University, and Sandra Ellison, a graduate of Fort Valise State University. And I'm a graduate of Fort Valise State University. And Councilman Chambers is a graduate of Albany State University. And Representative Reese is a graduate of Albany State University as well. And Cynthia Bobb, Sue Fontaine, Joan Stringer, Crystal Shahid, and our executive director of Fountain City Classic is Roddy Braskam, and I've asked her to join us and she's gonna take my last 30 seconds. Come on now.
On behalf of the Fountain City Classic, I am proud to be here today. I'm proud of the
I'm proud of the work that we have been able to do together, uh, for the past 34 years. And I really, really wanna thank Classic, uh, the Classic Committee, as well as the city of Columbus for your support. Most importantly, the community of Columbus for helping us to create a safe but purposeful event that will help students and our community for many generations to come. So we're very thankful and thankful to you all.
I, I won't thank Robbie because she leads a cadre of almost 100 volunteers. We start in June up until, uh, the, uh, November, the, whatever the date is, we always try to have the first weekend, the second. We prefer the first weekend because the, 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 the second weekend is Veterans Day. And we, we, we think, we, we have a parade and when, when, when we have it on the second weekend, we can't have a parade. And I, I'm very, feel strongly about that because I think Veterans Day ought to have their own platform and their day. So, uh, we don't compete, we support them in their effort. And so therefore, we always try to make it the first weekend, but we don't control the schedules, controlled by the S I A C conference. So we, 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 uh, for the next year, uh, it'll be the second, then we go back to the first, we're talking with, with the conference now. But I wanna just say thanks to our city government for all the years, um, and Robbie mentioned security. And of course, security is our, is paramount, uh, in having a safe environment. And I just wanna thank the sheriff, uh, countryman, and his entire team, uh, chief deputy, uh, Larry Parker, Major Curtis Locken, and all the members, Major Barker, right, who has, who has been with us for many, many years, and all of the members of the sheriff department who have assisted us, uh, uh, we have 40,000 people on site on Saturday. And that's a, that's a lot of people and, uh, and we are, we are excited about it. And, uh, so it's, it's a big day for us and it's a big day for the city of Columbus. And we just wanna make sure everybody's safe. And also wanna mention Police Chief Stoney Mathis and his team. And we're just very, very appreciative of, of all those that work and who provide a, a, an environment for us to have a better quality of life here in the city of Columbus. And then I wanna thank, um, uh, Columbus Civic Center and our Deputy City Manager, Lisa Goodwin. Uh, her team has just been exemplary, working with us at the, um, at the, uh, Columbus Civic Center and the box office, and it's a big operation. And, and I wanna congratulate her, she chairs the Tuskegee Morehouse Classic. And the Tuskegee Morehouse Classic, I'm just happy to be a part of that as well. I commend them for all that they do. Tuskegee Morehouse is considered the granddaddy of HBCU classic around the country and, and have been having that classic for 80 some plus years. So I wanna thank, uh, uh, Lisa Goodwin and her entire team. Then I wanna thank our city manager, I did you, the city manager. I wanna thank you and your team, when we called on you when we first had our early year of the meeting, uh, you designated members of your team to assist us and I just want that public to thank you. And, uh, you've been instrumental in, in, in the history of the Fountain City Classic. And I could not leave, uh, this podium without telling you how much I do appreciate all of the work and, and the advice that you provide. Robbie and I, when we meet with you every year annually to go over items and to try to make it a better place, uh, here in, in the city of Columbus. Park and Rec, Hollis Rowley, her and her team, they work very closely with us. And I wanna thank, uh, Parks and Recreation, the logistics of the Fountain City Classic, it's just, uh, Gerald Turner, who chairs our logistic committee, he works directly with, with Hollis and, and her entire team, and I wanna thank them. Uh, the Columbus Sports Council, uh, Mary Sherman, and all the members of the sports council, they work with us hand in hand. And I wanted to thank them this morning as well. Haley Atillery at the Convention and Trade Center, we have several events there, uh, every year. And, uh, the mayor comes, uh, annually would like to invite, about 35th, which will be our 12th anniversary, would like to invite all the members of the city council to be our guests next year. We have a opening reception, uh, every, uh, Friday, uh, prior to the game. And, uh, we appreciate, uh, the mayor coming and presenting the key to, uh, Dr. Lawrence Drake, who is the president, interim president of Auburn State University. And you're welcome, uh, Dr. Paul Jones, who's the president of Fort Valise State University as well. Bull Creek Golf Course Team, Jim Art, and, and all of their team members, we have a classic there of, uh, golf tournament, is well attended and much appreciated. And keep Columbus beautiful, uh, Linda Thomas Cuts, Cuts, who, uh, works with our, um, with our entire team. I know I might be missing someone, but I just wanted to come and say thank you. Uh, uh, it is a big weekend for the city of Columbus, it has been. The economic impact, uh, we're in the top 10 of economic, uh, generators, the hotels are filled, the restaurants are filled, uh, people are getting gas and, and buying and purchasing. And, um, we have raised, uh, some $5 million for the teams and, uh, sponsorships. And one of the things that we are very, very proud of is our new community scholarship program. In fact, we're gonna go live sometime in January where anyone in Columbus, going to any school in America, can apply for a, a scholarship. And we have a, a June luncheon at the Green Island Country Club, and we have all the students to come with their parents. And we have a, a, a speaker, and in fact, Travis Chambers was our speaker this year, City Councilman Travis Chambers. And, uh, it's an opportunity for us to, we all wanted to expand our, our, our brand, uh, and, and not just primary for Auburn State and Fort Valise State students, but we get sponsorships from all over the state of Georgia, from around the country. And, and, and they kinda warned us to broaden our footprint. And so this year, we had almost 14 students that, uh, that we awarded scholarships from, from $1,000 to $2,500 per, uh, person to attend the school of their choice anywhere in America. So we're looking forward to having that. Our, this is to be our third community scholarship program, uh, coming up, uh, uh, this June. And, uh, be looking on, look out for anybody that you think you would be worthy of, of a scholarship. And it'll be on our website, fountaincityclassic.com. And so start looking after January.
January 15th.
January 15th, we'll go live on, on, uh, and, uh, and we'll be more than happy to consider, uh, anybody on this council, got anybody interested. You can just call my mobile number and consider that your application. But, uh, but again, thank you all very, very much. It's, um, I, I just, I just felt the need, and as I told, um, the mayor and the city manager, I just wanted to come. And I have not been here since I retired from the legislature. And, uh, I've been at this podium many, many times and I work with, uh, Clifton Fay and Lucy and all the members of the legal staff here and with the city manager and all the members and the mayor and all of you city councilmen. I just wanna tell you, uh, how much I appreciate you all, uh, in my 48 years of serving the citizens of Columbus, uh, and what, uh, uh, this means, uh, uh, to me, uh, and my personal friendships that I have on this city council. And, uh, it's been my first time, uh, since I retired, I wanna just say thank you for that as well. It's been, it's been a long haul, uh, 48 years of state and two years federal. And, um, I'm looking forward to a real retirement. I just joked with Rosa, I told her, she's not retiring, she retreading. That's what A.J. McClung told me many, many years ago. He said, never retire, but just retread. And so with that, uh, I have fond memories of him when I entered A.J. McClung Stadium anytime I'm in it. And, uh, he and Red McDaniel's were two of my favorite people. And, uh, they got me started in 1973 at Golden Park, getting me appointed to the Columbus Medical Center Board of Trustees and being sworn in by Bob Feigner. That was one of the thrills of my life at the age of 23. So, uh, again, thank you all and I appreciate all of you. I appreciate all that you do for the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. Public life is no joke. It's a serious undertaking. And, uh, and I just wanna commend you all and thank you again for, uh, the support that you provide, uh, me personally as Chair of the Fountain City Classic and from our entire members, our entire committee, I thank you all again. And, uh, look forward to continuing the relationship and, uh, and I, I keep praying for our Columbus Legislative delegation, all that they do, and I pray for you all and hope you all will have a continued good relationship and continue to make Columbus grow and be the city that we all aspire to be.
Well, Dean Smirey, there's several people that wanna make comments. City Councilor Chambers?
So Dean Smirey, let me just say, you, you've, you've done a lot of thank yous. But let me say thank you for your servitude, um, for being a servant leader in our community. Um, not just locally, on the state level, on the national level, but just thank you for all that you do. You have a genuine heart for people and you believe in helping people. And you've been a visionary for this classic, which has been a great economic impact in our community. But just thank you for your leadership and I'm just happy to know you.
Okay.
And, and I know your heart. So just thank you and continue to thrive and continue to make a difference in people's lives. God bless you. Thank you.
Thanks, Sir. Councilor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Ambassador Smirey, uh, you are so right. I tell everybody, there's no definition for retirement, you just gotta keep moving, right? You just gotta keep moving. I'm sitting here thinking to myself, I'm gonna be disrespectful, but I do not mean to be disrespectful. But can I just call you Calvin?
Yes, sir, by all means.
Can I just call you friend? Because, you know...
I'll take that every day.
Well, I really, sometimes you wonder what, out, out of respect, what, what do we call you? Ambassador, you know, the representative...
In my 48 years, I've been called a lot, so I'll be happy to call him a friend.
You're awesome. I, you know, ambassador, uh, representative, dean, president, in the corporate world, president. I mean, there's so many titles that you hold, so many awesome tasks that you've been involved with, I just, I can't even think, you know, it's hard to even think about that. So I, I do not wanna show disrespect, but, uh, I really wanna call you Calvin. And, um, thank you for, for all you've done and just being a friend and, you know, I watch you, it's people like me, just, uh, you're a mentor. Uh, I don't talk to you about that, but I watch. I mean, I watch, you watch people. And, uh, with what you're doing is certainly outstanding. I do know sports tourism, you know that. I know sports tourism, I know the, the investment and what it does for our community, the benefits of what it does for our community, what you're involved in. And I can't thank you enough to say, uh, we really appreciate it because it spreads and resonates throughout our whole community in the area. And these events are, are wonderful and we certainly want to keep them here. And, uh, one of these days, when, when you decide to pass it on, I don't know who that is, but we gotta make sure that we're doing the right thing. And the city manager, I just, you know, we talk about it all the time, but we can't talk about it anymore. We've got a great venue, A.J. McClung Memorial Stadium. We got a great venue there. I know we just got the lights in, but there's so much, I go by that, as a former professional athlete, I go by there all the time and, and think about the things that we could do to make that better. And we've got so many opportunities in our community, but we need to really put that on the priority list and move that forward, the modifications, the enhancements, the things that we can do to secure, make sure that when those young players and all those representatives from those prestigious universities and other people, when they come in, they're gonna know that we care, but not only they see a first-class facility. We need to do that. And I hope we do. We talk about it a lot, we talk about it a lot, but we need to do that. We really do. And the city manager, I hope, uh, Mr. Mayor, that we take that on and just keep moving forward and keep developing the, uh, the facility there and make it wor, just make it renowned, uh, so we can have this continuing of these events, these, these games, these tournaments, these, these classics, all these things there. And even that, if we can enhance that stadium and, and make it a multifunctional facility that can even do more. I, I, I mean, I think it's a game winner for our community and, uh, you started it. I mean, you, you've been involved with it and you keep it going. And so I guess I can call you Chair there, you're, you're the chairman. So, uh, thank you and...
Thank you.
It's good to see you today.
It's good to see you and, and we've had some good discussions, uh, over the years. And, uh, and I, although we have disagreed sometime, we've always been respectful of one another and our friendship has endured. And for that, I said thank you and I appreciate you. And I, I, and say to the city manager, I remember, uh, he and I talking during the classic, and, uh, I said, could you just turn the lights on just for the heck of it? And he called and had the lights turned on, I just wanted to see them. It wa, it wasn't dark yet, but I just wanted to see them on. But, uh, we'll be happy to assist in any way, serve in any way, in any capacity, if there's anything that we can do to assist with the discussion and development of A.J. McClung Memorial Stadium. We stand ready to assist. And I told the mayor that privately and I've spoken to several members of council privately.
Councilor Hickey?
My friend, my brother. I would just like to echo what my colleague, uh, Councilman Chambers said and Councilman Davis. You know, we've been friends for many years and I just really appreciate all the great work that you've done with the classic and all the great work you've just done for the state and for, for the city. So, uh, once again, just wanna echo what, what everybody's already said. Appreciate you and, uh, you know, I'm always a phone call away. So thank you very much for all that you've done.
Thank you, Councilor. Appreciate that.
Councilor Tucker?
Megan would say, Uncle Calvin.
I'll take that too.
But I wanna, I wanna thank you, um, for everything that you've done for me, even prior to being on council, but definitely being on council, um, linking me up with individuals like the National Foundation of Legislative Women, you know, with Senator Tonya Anderson and all the individuals that kinda just put so much in me to understand legislation and how the legislative process works and understanding this role as an elected official. I mean, as soon as I got elected, you had me linked up right with some amazing women who have been in office for many years. And I can't, I can't thank you enough for that because it helped me understand my role. But also, thank you, we know all the amazing stuff you do for, um, this community. And I really agree in reference to the economic impact. Um, we always say that, but $2-plus million annually that come just from Fountain City Classic, that, that's amazing, that's sports tourism. Um, and a lot of times, we don't say the number, but that number is exceedingly increasing year. So thank you for what you do for Columbus, thank you for what you do for me, definitely thank you for what you do for Megan, um, she loves you seriously.
I love her.
And, and it shows, and it really shows, and I, I appreciate that. And I'm sure other people know how big your heart is, especially when it comes to young students and helping them, um, on their way to their career path. So thank you for what you do for Megan.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Councilman Tucker. And, and the, uh, I, I, I omitted this, but Peter Bowden is retired. And I, we honored him, uh, Mayor, if you remember, at, at the Fountain City Classic, uh, evening event, uh, kicking off the Fountain City Classic. And we thank him because his staff worked with us with all these hotels, they work and, uh, and, uh, help us, uh, assist all of the people that are visiting Columbus. I, I failed to mention Peter Bowden, but I, I, I miss, I didn't mention him.
Counselor Huff?
Ambassador Smirey, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for your service, uh, but I just wanna take you back for a minute. Uh, you were Spencer High School student.
Oh, God, way back, way back.
My, my, my mother was a, was a teacher there. And I watched you and others come up as a younger person. And following along and watching you take off, I think I mentioned this to you, I'm not sure, but in 1991 timeframe too, after the 90 census, we picked up, uh, state seat in the redistricting and then, uh, Congressman Bishop was leaving the state senate to run for Congress. So I had cause in that period of time to run for the, one of those two seats. And my father used you as an example in my life at that time. Uh, he explained to me how you had a secure job, so you had something to fall back on, even if you didn't stay in politics very long. And he explained to me, I needed to go down the same path, get on solid footing before you ever attempt to do anything in politics. So I watched you go along the way, get things done, uh, the intrastate banking, uh, when you all got that passed, I was an insurance agent. I took time to drive to a city about two or three hours from here, just to see, uh, CBNT, Cenovus Building. Cenovus building that had come across in your legislation. To see that it was really true, that we had a CBNT two, three hours from home. So in following your career, I took my time. And it was some 20 years later. And the people who ran for those seats are still in those seats and they're doing a great job. And they were all, according to my father, on equal footing. City manager's wife, state representative Carolyn Hughley, in insurance, she had a solid start. State Senator Ed Harbison was retired from the military. He had a check and he was working radio news. I was the only one in the crowd that just had a dream, just wanted to be a part of something. So I just went on to be a volunteer in the city for about 30 years or so. And it came to pass, as my father said, "Your time will come if it's meant to be." So I was riding in Chatham Woods one day, taking a look at things. And someone asked a question, "Why don't you get involved?" I said, "Well, that's my daddy. He had died and moved on." So I just wanted to say to you this morning, my mother was not only a teacher with you in high school, but she was also a graduate of Fort Valley State University.
That's right.
So I took her back for her 50th reunion. And her classmate, her roommate, was still alive at the time, came down from Atlanta and they had a big weekend in Fort Valley. And she loved you. She loved everything about it. I brought her to every event that you had for the alumni from day one to be her escort. And she was just so proud of what you were doing. So I will end this by saying, "Thank you so much for your service." There are a lot of things I've had to look back at, pull at. I've spoken with you personally about some things. And the patience that you just exude all the time, you exhibited all the time. And even in the heat of battle, you're more patient than a lot of people I've ever known.
Thank you.
So thank you, thank you. And the last thing I will say is, in my travels to my homecomings and things of that nature, I was just real happy to see 40,000 people in Columbus, Georgia and not somewhere else. They're spending money all over town. It's a great experience for someone to say, "I can't find a hotel room." I had to drive down from La Grange. I had to come down from Newnan. I had to come down from Atlanta just to get here. And when you put the tailgating together the way it is now, spoke with Deputy City Manager Guttman about this, but you all have put a formula together to make sure that people are involved in the game as well as the tailgating. And the security was wonderful. And it was just to see people everywhere. I just, it was phenomenal. So thank you again. Continue to do what you do. I'm here to help you always in any capacity. So thank you. Safe travels. Do what you do. They know you everywhere. They know you everywhere. So whatever name you go by, they know you everywhere that I travel.
Thank you very much.
So thank you again. Take care of yourself.
I appreciate that. I can't even remember when I didn't know a Huff. So it's just been a long time.
Yeah, that...
And Representative Hughley, I want to congratulate her on becoming the North Carolina Leader and Randa Roberts. We have two members, Senator Robertson and that a member of, of the leadership of both parties. So y'all should lean on that. But I want to congratulate both of them.
Your father and my father used to talk a lot, so, yeah.
All right. City Attorney, thing?
I'll just be briefly and echo some of these comments, but Calvin, I'm going to tell you, you'll always be Dean Smyrie to the City Attorney's Office. We've looked at probably 42 legislative agendas together and none of the things on those agendas would have been passed without you. And I want to thank you again publicly for all of your service. It's been incredible. And there are a lot of amenities in Columbus that wouldn't be here without you. So congrats on your career and good luck with the retread.
Thank you.
Counselor Kogle.
Ambassador Smyrie, thank you for all that you do. I echo a lot of what my colleagues say here. Thank you for everything that you do for District 7, for that footprint in particular. And I know a lot of the tourism dollars that are contributed by the Fountain City Classic really do make a big impact down the road with supporting other events. So it's a little bit of a ripple effect and you're a big ripple in this community. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
City Manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Smyrie, Dean, my friend.
Brother.
Brother, yes. All of that, double brother. But just want to join the others. It's all been said. Thank you for your service in the Georgia House. Thank you for your service here locally through Fountain City Classic. Thank you to Robbie and the entire Fountain City Classic team. You guys, you have personally made an impact on this community and certainly the Fountain City Classic has made an impact on this community. And so I join the others in saying thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. We couldn't have done without you and y'all. Thank you very much.
Counselor Crabb.
Thank you, sir, for everything that you do. I love watching your calm, confident servant leadership. And I know that we are all blessed because we are witness to it. And I wish you the very best and thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Protem.
Representative, we go back a long way and I...
Like a car seat, we go so far back.
It's just been fun watching you serve over the years because even though you were elected in a region or district and you're elected as a partisan member of the House, that never came up in any service or request that was needed for Columbus or Georgia. And I just admire your service and I think that's what we're all saying here today, is that you've served Columbus well, you've served Georgia well and the nation well. And as a representative of Columbus, you have just, your fingerprints are far and wide across this country and we thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Gary. We've been friends a long time, Representative, Councilman Allen. You know, we go way back, your father. I remember, you know, A.J. McClung and Mayor Allen and I talking in the '73, '72. And it's just, it's just a wonderful experience to have met so many members of the city council. And when I think about it, we're in the Red McDaniel. I mean, I just, it's just something about, you know, being able to work together. And I mentioned meeting A.J. McClung and Red McDaniel in Golden Park one evening for a baseball game. And they think of being nominated to serve on the Medical Center Board of Trustees. And that's the type of, that's how I got my start. So why would I do things any different?
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you.
Calvin, appreciate everything that you do. You've really appreciated Fountain City Classic. I mean, that's one of the biggest things to hit this community annually. And for that, I want to say, Robbie, good job.
That's who, that's why I thank her.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all. Thank you very much.
Next is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations in support of the Dream Lives motion and second to approve the acceptance of those donations. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, good. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, we'll move on to your agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Got a short business agenda. First item up is zoning of property at 988 Far Road from General Commercial to Single Family Residential 4. Recommended for approval. And we've got Aaron Clements and Neighbor Works on this petition. Anybody here for him? Okay. We've got Mr. Clements here. Let's see. Any questions around the table on this petition? I'm seeing. All right. Would you like to say something as far as a brief proposal?
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, counselors, city manager and attorney. I'm here on behalf of Columbus Housing Initiative, otherwise known as Neighbor Works Columbus. This very simply is the first move in a vision to transform this property into something similar to Elliot's Walk, which I'm sure most of you or all of you know about. This is just the first step of many that we hope to come.
All right. This is the first reading. We'll ask if anybody in the audience wants to be heard. Okay, got one. Is it all mean?
There will come a time when I won't be able to come in here. Teresa Alameen, 2822 Shaw Street, East Winton, historic black neighborhood. This is a departure from the usual. What we usually see is residential to commercial. So I'm rising to say hallelujah. Because if there's one thing we know, we know that Muskogee County, Columbus, needs more affordable housing. And Neighbor Works really stands out in that regard, but it's not enough. I've been trying to study this book from the planning department. I think citizens do not understand how important the city attorney's agenda is because it's all about the land. This Columbus is on stolen land from the Creek Nation. You don't hide it. It's in the history. You stole the land from the indigenous people who lived here. Over at Fort Moore, it's all kinds of markers about how they stole the land from the indigenous people. This zoning book is rather complicated, but I took the time thanks to the planning department because that's one thing about Columbus. Information is very accessible. Nothing is hidden. I love that about Columbus. So I printed this out. I believe I gave a copy to Pastor Flakes. Not a cheap print job, but I'm studying because I disagree with what the planning department is doing in general. There's unmanaged commercial growth in this city. Most cities of this size have run out of land. Raleigh just annexed 11,000 acres in Wake County. It's not a consolidated government, but this consolidated government does not do good by the people. You drive down Winton Road, Macon Road, Milgen Road. I have never seen a city with this much undeveloped land, acres upon acres. What Neighbor Works is doing is a small thing, but the planning department needs to figure out how to use all these acres and acres of undeveloped land for more affordable housing. It's a travesty. It's a travesty. What does this Columbus consolidated government represent? It's the business interest. Several of you are in real estate up here or come out of real estate. Affordable housing. Number five. Number 10. Mr. Mayor, that's what this city needs. You know real estate, I do believe. And so I'm looking forward to seeing change so that we have more affordable housing like what Neighbor Works is trying to do. It's just a drop in the book. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Does anybody else in the audience want to be heard on this petition? All right. It's on the table with eight conditions. We'll vote on it next week, Mayor. Bring it back at that time. Next item up is FY24 Budget Reconciliation Ordinance. I'll call on the Finance Director, Ms. Alexander, to come over and let me also say, Mayor, that we've spoken with Budget Chair, Counselor Thomas, who could not be here today. She requested, if necessary, that she be able to ask questions on second reading next week. And any further discussion that might be needed, we can certainly allow next week. Ms. Alexander, you want to go ahead and explain the reconciliation?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager and Mr. City Attorney. The final budget amendment for FY24 is what is currently on the city attorney's agenda. This is an annual sort of cleanup amendment that we do every fiscal year as we anticipate the closure of our prior year audit. We are really close to being complete in terms of the FY24 audit. And so before we are able to release any financials and before the auditors are able to turn over any drafts to us, obviously, the final budget has to be reconciled and that's what's being presented here today. In terms of the budgetary changes, typically, what we see as part of the final budget reconciliation is where we sort of reallocate those budgets to cover those departments that may have gone over, from the departments that may have had a surplus in terms of the budget. Unfortunately, this year, there is some increase in terms of the overall budget that needs to be adjusted. We weren't able to quite cover all of the expenditures in terms of what was initially adopted at the mid-year, which was 200, just over 200 million. And we'll be reconciling or amending the budget in the general fund, I'm sorry, for just over 205 million. Good news is revenues came in more than expected as we closed out the fiscal year. So we are adjusting the revenue budget to account for about 203 million in revenue. So there's about a $2.4 million shortfall in terms of what we collected in revenues for the FY24 year and what we are obligated for FY24. So a small utilization of our reserves from an overall perspective, particularly in the general fund. So there were some departments that did come before you all preliminarily in terms of their budgetary overages, just starting with the City Attorney's Office for various litigation expenses. The planning department came before you all for personnel expenses, of course, public works. There were various expenses related to facilities maintenance, the sheriff's office for inmate medical and various jail operating expenses, the coroner's office for various operating expenses. And then there was our non-departmental, which isn't particular to any, specific to any particular department, for streetlight energy, as well as some settlements that were approved by the council. So that in a nutshell is the budgetary overage for the general fund. I do have a quick presentation that provides more specific information in terms of some of the adjustments. Not sure if Mr. King is able to pull that up. It's just a few slides. There we go. So this is...
I know there are two new councilors, but then people are watching what she's presenting. And I know that she said it, but I just want to make it really clear. What she is presenting, and it's in your document online, of course, but what she's presenting is not the current fiscal year. It's last fiscal year, the fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2024. So it has nothing to do with the current year that we're operating in. And what it has to do with if the, if the city manager's office came in $10,000, and I'm just, as an example, under budget, last year's budget, and the city attorney came in $10,000 over budget, last year's budget. The finance director will move the $10,000 that I came in under to the city attorney's budget that he came in over, that all the city attorney's budget is now balanced, and my budget is still balanced. And so it's cleanup work because we can't have one department over budget. And so some come in under, some departments, some come in over. And so this is cleanup work. So the external auditor came in after the June 30th. They're doing their work. And, and so to move forward with closing out the year and filing our audit with those we're to file it with by the end of the year, this cleanup work has to be done, and then everything's balanced. Did I explain that correctly?
You did.
Okay. I just want to make sure you know it's not this year's budget. It has nothing to do, it's last year's budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So this chart just provides a 15-year history of our fund balance reserves. Just going back to FY 2010, you can see we were at 89 days, just over 89 days around that time. And we're ending, or we're projecting to end FY '24 with about 113 days. So 113.62 reserve days is what we're projecting we'll end FY '24. This chart just provides a fund balance history. It's just a percentage of the fund balance reserves. You can see here that the fund balance experienced significant changes from FY '12 to FY '16. And with the old loss portion of the fund balance eventually outweighing the general fund portion until it hit a drastically low point in terms of general fund reserves in FY '16. But starting in FY '17, we've been able to reverse that decline in trend, as well as change the composition of the fund balance reserves. So this chart here, just speaking in terms of composition of the reserves, just provides a five-year lookback, so not as lengthy as the 15-year lookback, but a five-year lookback in terms of the value of a day of reserves. As you can see here, the number of reserve days and the reserve balance has incrementally increased over the last five years. With the exception of FY '24, there was some utilization, obviously, of reserve days for FY '24. But the reserve balance just as a whole is 30% higher in FY '24 than it was in FY '20. And in terms of the value of a day, that has also increased over the course of time. And it's about 18% greater in terms of the value of a day of reserves in '24 than it was in 2020. So some of the things that impacts the fund balance reserves, I mean, again, reserves does not mean cash because we have to recognize our revenues and expenditures in accordance to generally accepted accounting practice. And that really dictates the timing of when reserves and expenditures are recognized. So you have like, for instance, property taxes. There's a 60-day lookback in which we have to apply any property tax revenue that we receive in the new year back to the old year because those taxes are measurable and available to us. There are taxes that are not measurable and available to us, particularly some of those excise taxes, the occupation taxes, because those are dependent upon people reporting the information to us. And so those revenues are reported in the fiscal year in which they are received. Nonetheless, though, the fund balance projections in terms of the days, those are as of a given point in time, and that's based on current conditions. And it assumes that there's strict adherence to the budget. You know, nobody's going over, and that will meet our revenue estimates. But the number of reserve days will fluctuate each fiscal year because the value of the day changes. So FY '24, the value of the day was 605, $600,509. For FY '25, that number is going to be 663,884. So if we're using the 68 million that we have left, if we take a look at that for FY '24, the value of that in terms of days is about 102 days, when you calculate based on the new value of the day. That makes any sense? In terms of the general fund, as far as general fund expenses, as you can see in this chart here, these are actual expenses coming to that $205 million expense number. And obviously, the highest priority continues to be funding public safety. In FY '24, 54% of all general fund expenses were spent on public safety purposes. General operations is the second largest expenditure category at 13%. And then we have a criminal justice expenses rounding out the top three at 8%. In terms of revenues, where we're getting the money from? In this particular chart, again, and this kind of aligns with, you know, the way we budget, and which is that general property taxes accounts for about 26% of all the general fund revenue, with sales and use taxes accounting for another 26%. You also see here franchise fees. That makes up about 10% of the revenues that we received last year. Business and other taxes at 12%. And then charges for services accounts for another 10% of the general fund revenue that we received or collected. So in terms of budget to actual variances for FY '24, you can see here, the business and other taxes, that had a budget of about 15.5 million. The actuals came in at about 23.8 million, leaving an $8.3 million difference, or increase, I should say, than budgeted, collected than budgeted, I should say. General property taxes, 46.6 million. Actual collections, about 53.1 with a difference of 6.5. Sales and use taxes, 47.5 million for the budget. Sales and use, and that includes sales taxes as well as excise taxes because those are considered use taxes. 46.5 million budgeted, 52.1 million received with a difference of about 4.6 million. Charges for services, that's 16.4 million budgeted, 20.2 million in collections, 3.8 million difference there. Our interest income, obviously, is we have more in reserves. We have more money to invest interest rate, interest rates at the pool, the, oh, I'm sorry, the Georgia Fund One pool. Those have been good to us over the past 12 months, trending about between 4% and 5% interest that we've earned on the money at the pool. So budgeted about $400,000. 3.1 million that we've received with a difference of 2.7 million. Fines and forfeitures, 2.6 million budgeted, about 4.6 million received. And that's pretty, that's split pretty much between recorders court and municipal court, with both of those courts bringing in about additional a million, a million in revenue from fines and forfeitures. Insurance premium, 16.8 million budgeted, 18.4 million received. You know, that has, that's money that we receive from the state, and that's based on covered lives in our county at a rate of a dollar. And that's, you know, really something that we can't really, we can't really plan for. I guess I should say, I mean, it has incrementally increased over the last several years. And so from a budgetary perspective, usually what we received in one fiscal year, we'll count that as the budget for the next fiscal year. In franchise fees, 19.2 million budgeted, received about 20.1 million, difference of about $900,000 there. Miscellaneous and intergovernmental revenues, 2.8 million budgeted, 3.5 million in received revenues, leaving a surplus of about $700,000. And then licenses and permits, this is 3.6 million budgeted, and actually receiving about 3.1, I'm sorry, I think I have, I have that backwards. It's 3.1 million budgeted, 3.6 million received, the increase of about $500,000. My apologies on that particular slide. So obviously, you know, it's not prudent for us to recognize all the revenue increases in one particular year, especially when some are volatile or sensitive to the market, such as, you know, the sales taxes and the franchise fees. But we do recognize these trends using a three-year blended average. And in most cases, there's a considerable amount of time in which we are making these revenue projections for the next fiscal year and when we receive some of this revenue. But a large portion of these budgetary increases have already been recognized in the FY '25 budget. So we have taken what we were anticipating into ending FY '24 into consideration for FY '25. So just kind of talking about the top three in terms of occupation taxes. I mean, again, as you can see here, this has steadily increased over the last five years. That's even, you know, even with brick and mortar businesses struggling to remain open. But I do believe FY '24 is somewhat of an anomaly as more businesses were brought into compliance. And I do believe as we move through FY '25, we should see more predictable norms. I don't anticipate that we will be collecting anywhere close to $24 million in occupation tax revenue for '25, but definitely more than, than we've collected over the past five years. General property taxes, this chart just shows year-over-year increases for general property tax revenue. As you can see here, the average increase has been about 1% year-over-year. This does include title of lower on taxes. We do not have any sort of discretion in terms of the rate that's charged to, for title of lower on taxes that is set by the state, that did go up to 7% as of July 1st of '23. So that is included in that number. In terms of sales tax collections, this is kind of the last top three, last of the top three in terms of collections, large variances for budget to actual collections. You can see here from this particular chart that the sales tax kind of has, you know, gone up and down. It has increased pretty consistently since FY '19, the kind of small dip there in FY '22. I will say year-to-date collections as of October are about 5% higher for '24 than it, than they were in '23. So, you know, obviously, we'll continue and hopefully continue to see our sales tax collections increase. This chart just shows the other local option sales tax fund, again, about a 5% increase. We've collected about 16.3 million in other local option sales tax, 11.4 million for public safety, close to 4.9 million for infrastructure. This chart just shows where we are as of October, which is the last month of data that we've received from the state. And if we collected exactly the same amount in FY '25 as we did in FY '24 from November to June, we'll end up being about 1.6% or 780,000 roughly above FY '24 collections. And so that is all that I have, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them concerning the final budget reconciliation for FY '24.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I think it was highlighted, the city manager, you kind of made an attempt to kind of describe things in a layman's way, and especially for new council representatives. I want to expand on that a little bit more, just so everybody knows. The budget, somebody asked me the question, who's, what's the Budget Review Committee? Well, so we really don't have one. You're looking at it right here. The council is the Budget Review Committee, and we have a chair. We had a vice chair in the past, but we don't, we don't have a vice chair right now. So I wanted to make that clear because it's somewhat confusing. Like, there's a committee out there, it's the council. The council holds that equal authority when we deliberate over, over the budget. Again, these are, you said, this is a kind of routine, and it is over the years of doing the carryovers. When I look at these numbers myself, I mean, you should have a smile on your face because these are some of the better, if not the best, numbers I've seen as far as carryovers in quite a, quite a while. Operating funds increased, what, over $20 million in the carryovers? Am I right on that? The non-operating funds, in total, is it 25 the total amount that we're actually carrying over from '23 to '24? It's a significant amount of revenue, I guess, what, what I'm saying. But just looking at these numbers here on the carryovers, they're, they're significant. And some of these numbers, I've never seen them like this before. So that's a good thing. That's, that's, that's a good thing. Is that a good way to reflect it, Madam Finance Director?
Not, well, to some extent, yes. But, I mean, in terms of what we're increasing as far as the final changes, it is really sort of catching up the expenditure budget to the revenue budget to some extent, particularly in the general fund, and then in the other funds, really showing the utilization of some of the reserves that we already had in place or increasing because of the revenues increase.
Right. I think the collections, I would be safe in saying that the collections are far ahead of what we've estimated or what we estimated during our budget. I, I think that trend's going to continue somewhat in this year. I know last year we talked about, at this time, that we were somewhere, I think I asked a question, somewhere around 90 days in the fund balance. I think that's what was stated off the top of my head. And this year, it's stated unaudited, 113. You know, with what I'm seeing here, it looks, it looks like, you know, it might be 113 today, but this could significantly change when we go into our budget process and could be much, much higher based on these carryover numbers I'm seeing.
It could be for '25. For FY '23, we ended at 132 days, actually. And so we're ending FY '25, I'm sorry, FY '24 at about 113 days. I mean, I believe we projected that we would end FY '25 at about, you know, at about 97 days. And certainly, as we move through FY '25, if we continue to see some of the increases that we've seen, particularly in the sales taxes, it's likely, very likely, that we'll end that better than 97 days.
Well, I reserve the right to be wrong, but I, you know, I'm going to predict now it's going to be much higher than what we're talking about. So anyway, I wanted to break this down a little bit, just for my... So anyway, I wanted to break this down a little bit, just for my colleagues. The way I'm, the way I'm looking at this, even in twenty twenty-three, we budgeted for certain matters and these are being carried over. I'm still, I'm under the impression, Will, and I'm going to ask this question, will those money that we're carrying over still be used for the intended purposes of twenty three? Are they, are they going to be used for those specific, I guess, budgeted, budgeted request? Or are they just going into the fund balance where, and we're not going to be doing any of these requests from these carryovers? You follow me?
I believe. And if the question is, whatever we're carrying over into the next fiscal year, if we're going to use that for the designated purpose, the answer is yes.
Okay. So some of that money's going to be used, it's just it can get used in twenty-three and it get used in twenty-four in addition to our current budget.
That's correct.
Gotcha, okay. So that's, that's an important note. There are, I'm seeing that there are, most of these, some of the money that we're being asked to, when we, we approve this, there's a lot of pay plan adjustments here. So that would be a carryover, that would be a new, would that be a new expenditure that we are adding to the current budget and approving this amendment?
It would be included in this budget amendment as well as included in the budget for FY twenty five.
Right, and that's going to continue over time. I mean, it just continues. So, you know, that's, that's an important note right there. I think it's two. There's some carryovers, it says, but then there, there, there's a list here from different departments. I think it's city manager, information technology inspection codes and all. These are expenditure carryovers. Are these items that didn't happen in twenty twenty-three that we're going to try to make happen in twenty twenty-four? And these are the funds that, that we're talking about that have already been designated, were designated in twenty twenty-three. Am I right on that?
That's correct, and they carried over into fiscal year twenty four.
Okay, so those are, those are expenditures too. We're really not outside of our current budget that we're, we've adopted. If we make this, one of the questions is some people might think that if we amend the budget, that we're actually amending new expenditures or new requests. We're not doing that, we're sticking to our same budget. This is simply the process of carrying it over. Whatever the items, like I explained, from twenty twenty-three that had already been budgeted that didn't happen, it'd get carried over. And those things will be taken care of, but there's no new expenditures for twenty twenty-four, additional expenditures being requested in this ordinance.
That's correct.
Okay.
With the exception of some of the overages.
Or the pay plan adjustments. Right. And the overages would, would, even though we're designating them, they would be coming out of the fund balance. I know we've.
They would.
The city manager used the, you know, the analogy. It is, he is right on that, but, but his ten thousand dollars would have went to the fund balance first and then come back out.
That's correct.
To cover whether it's the city or anybody else. So that's what I wanted to.
Yes, sir.
To, to, to say. So that money would come out of the fund balance to, to deal with some of the overages in departments.
That's correct.
I think that, you know, those are, you know, I'm just going to say this because I took a lot of heat when we reduced the millage and a lot of things were said. But, you know, when you look at some of these things and how you got to deliberate through them, well, some of these funds are tied to millages. And, you know, there was some concern about taking money out of certain funds and then reduce, but then now you look at it today, based on the millage, the fund is right back to where it was. As a matter of fact, four hundred thousand dollars more in that fund, the, what we called at the time the energy and care fund, or community health care fund, but it has grown back. And that's what really, people don't realize, over the thirty years, when there was a contract for this, it started thirty years ago, it was based on a millage and it just grew, grew, and continues just to, to grow every year. So, you know, that's, is music to my ears because it, it just helps to reinforce some of the initiatives that we talked about with the community health care fund that was just, I think at the last council meeting, the fire chief came up and talked about what he would like to do. Now we've got an additional two point four million dollars in that fund that wasn't there last year and is back up there. So, I mean, those are things to feel good about, that, that, that we can accomplish and, and continue to move our city forward for the sake of our citizens, the benefits for our citizens and our community. I think, Madam Finance Director, you, you answered all my questions, but I wanted to highlight some of those things because life is confusing, there's a lot, these are big numbers. And I tell everybody all the time, you know, they talk about us trying to make decisions, even there's some on the table right now where we're at, trying to make decisions. This is a three hundred million dollar government operation with a lot of moving parts. I mean, I'm looking at this paper, and it could be Greek to a lot of people. There's a lot of moving parts in this government at any given time. And just to make, you, you know, you want to get it done in a week, it doesn't work like that. It doesn't work like that. There are so many steps that you got to go through, so many steps and all to, to, to make that happen. So, you know, I, I wanted to highlight that, and a lot of times you, you, look, y'all, y'all have been, I've, I've always felt like our finance department and our executive management has been extremely conservative. I always have felt like that, and sometimes we push it a little bit, but, you know, I've always felt good about that. And, and, you know, our, I think our city's doing well, you know, and this is evident in these numbers that it's doing well. I personally think that we're going to hit a level, like the finance director said, that will probably taper off, and that's going to be key to how we make decisions in the future. But, you know, it's, you know, it's pretty stable right now, so I feel good. Thank you for answering my questions, and I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if I may make a point, and, and Counselor Davis, you're correct, we do operate in a conservative, we take a conservative approach. And we, we think we've got to do that because if we don't, it's going to be disastrous if we get it, if we, we're not conservative and we, and we get it wrong. And, but I, I do want to say that I appreciate your review, your comments, to try and make it clear to those watching television and those who are here. And, and, and every single category of revenue, you, you saw as she went through that, that our revenue is up in every single category, every single category. And that's a good financial report from last fiscal year. And I, I will, just for those watching, when you talk about reserve and you're saying one hundred and thirteen days or ninety-seven days, I just want to remind those who are new here around the table and those watching, you know, the Government Finance Officers Association says your city, your county should have no less than sixty days. So when you hear we've got a hundred and twenty days, a hundred and thirteen, you know, they're looking at and holding us, you know, to the fire for sixty days, not a hundred and twenty. This council has an administrative policy that we're not going to just do sixty days, but we're going to do ninety days. That's much better than GFOA requires. And so not only are we above the ninety-day administrative policy, we are, not only are we at the ninety-day administrative policy set by this council, we're out beyond that, a hundred and thirteen days. And so financially, and then even when you look at our bond ratings, you know, we, with Standard and Poor's, your double A plus, and Moody, you know, you're double A two, I believe. But we have a great bond rating. And so financially, just know that we are in a very good position, the city government. And, and we need to keep it that way. And so we're, we intend to continue to be conservative in our approach. And so I just wanted to put those things out.
If I may, Mayor, just, you're right, the city manager, and, you know, there were, if you, you saw the graph up there, you saw the graph up there, we had challenges. And, and you mentioned sixty days. Sixty days has always been our line in the sand. We don't crawl sixty days. You can't. I mean, you really can't because you have a black swan event or some major catastrophic emergency. For example, we could have been an easily target of that last hurricane that came through. We could have been in Augusta or some of these other cities that, that struggle. What are you going to do?
Right.
We got to go into that emergency fund or that fund balance to be able to cover our expenses if we don't get reimbursed by the federal government and FEMA and GMA and all the rest of them. But, you know, there were some days for COVID that I remember, we were challenged, we were challenged, we had to say no, right, Mayor? Right, Councilon? We said no to a lot of departments, and there may be some days we had to say no. I mean, times are good right now, but we have to say no because of that sixty-day mark and by ordinance, by our ordinance. It, it's so severe that if we go under sixty days, we're all out of it and you're mandated. You're mandated to get it back over sixty days. That's how, how important that, that mark is. And I think there was a time we did, and you had to get it back over that sixty-day mark. But lately, we've been, you know, and, and I want to highlight one more thing, Mayor, and then I'm finished, but, you know, we've had some challenges lately over the last year in dealing with some things, but some of those numbers reflect how the city has gone out and tried to get back on the right path, collections, and, and going out and getting that money that's out there that, that, that is due to the city. And a lot of that, some of that is reflected. I mean, it's shown there, some of it's reflected. It may not be the same in the next year, but it's reflected at how there's been some work. So the reassuring thing is, and the confidence, is that there's been work and, you know, and I've said it many times in public, we may not be able to recoup all of it that's been talked about over the years, it's just not going to happen. But at least there's some work, a reassurance, there's some work and some effort going on to the point where I get concerned that a lot of priorities in certain departments, you know, you have to focus on one thing, you can't do your real task and your real job. So we need to look at that, and we need, sooner or later, I think the executive management needs to tell us, where do we draw that line? Because we need to put a bookmark in the history or the chapter of, of, of the revenue matter and, and just clean that up and, and start from a point four. Because there's going to be a time, we can't just keep living in the past, and you, you've done about all you can do to go back and, and, and collect or enforce. I know you talked about some enforcement matters, still struggling there, but this council may have to make that decision, you know, do we just clean the books and move forward from a certain point? But I'm sure we'll have that conversation later.
Yeah, and, and I will say, Mayor, I appreciate that comment too because they, we have worked hard on collections. And, you know, I mentioned one particular, you know, and I'll mention them then because I, now, because I mentioned them a couple of weeks ago, Chuck E. Cheese, they're now in compliance. But it took going to court for time, it took hiring a law firm to do some work for us, but we let them know that we are serious about your complying and getting the business license. And within a week after I called them out at that last meeting, they were in compliance. So I commend Chuck E. Cheese for complying. It costs us, you know, court time and legal expenses, but we showed them and we're going to, we'll show others, we're not playing with you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Tucker?
Oh, wait a minute. There you go.
Yes, my fellow counselor, Davis, he was asking a question about carryovers, and I think he mentioned something about expenditures, and it looked like he was, I think he said new expenditures, and he was about to say something, but is, is there anything new in regards to this right here? He was like, it's some, some, some things that may be new. And then he was talking, so, and you couldn't answer the question?
Well, the only thing that I was thinking about at that point in time was that the carryovers that are listed here are from the prior fiscal year, they're from FY twenty three, as it was mentioned. They were carried over for a specific purpose and incorporated into the FY twenty-four budget for that purpose. And so what we have is a budget before today's proposed adjustment, a budget that aligns to about two hundred million, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And what I was about to say was that due to the final changes of, and the reconciliation of some departments in terms of the overages that they had, there is an increase that's required as far as the budget is concerned. So it's not new expenditures, because these expenditures have already occurred as of June thirtieth. But there is a new budget that we have to adopt. It's an increase from the last budget that we adopted at mid-year of about two point four million dollars.
And you said it's not new expenditures, it's stuff that we had already approved?
It's, it's things that have already, that were approved throughout the year. There were some events that occurred post the mid-year budget amendment that was approved by the council in terms of some of the departments that came up and said, hey, I'm going to be over budget because of this, or I'm going to be over budget because of that. So the council did approve. No, save the city, it's not one. I'd like the sheriff, she's the sheriff. The council did approve to appropriate additional monies. This budget amendment is incorporating those approvals pursuant to ordinance thirteen dash thirty-nine.
Oh, also, that presentation is not online. If we could get that added, I know you probably just did it, you probably want to change that last figure.
Yes, I will. Yes. I will certainly get that.
Thank you.
Then the other questions around the table, we will bring that back for a vote next week. And the finance director can stand by again. This next item is the first reading ordinance, amend provisions of chapter nineteen, business license occupation tax updates, if you want to make a couple of comments. Ms. Alexander?
Yes, so what you have before you today in terms of the adjustments or the changes to the code section specific to occupation tax, taxes, there are two requested changes. The first one is in reference to section nineteen dash fifty-seven, and this is the section of the code that addresses the occupation tax exemptions. So this part, most of the code, as it relates to occupation taxes and just taxes in general, that hadn't been updated since nineteen ninety-five. So there are a lot of statewide exemptions that apply to individuals or businesses that are not reflected in our local code. Now, we have to apply those exemptions either way because they're statewide. I mean, we don't have a choice in whether or not we provide these exemptions, but you have to dig all over the state code to find them. I, I feel like making the, this, this particular update to nineteen dash fifty-seven provides a good point of reference for local businesses in terms of the exemptions that apply. So that is the first part of the proposed ordinance. The second part is nineteen dash fifty-nine, which addresses the quarterly payment of occupation taxes. And again, the purpose of updating this code is to help us really sort of move forward and prepare with online renewals. As I mentioned previously, the quarterly payment option is just not conducive with an online process. You know, just based on us researching additional municipalities, the quarterly payment option is really unique to Columbus. I haven't found one. I haven't found one yet that offers a quarterly payment option. And out of the eight thousand plus businesses that we have and the licenses that we process, less than three hundred businesses utilize this option. So I think it is a change that's necessary in order for us to move forward in terms of, you know, streamlining the the process. And really setting us up for success, whether it's us or some outside agency in terms of online processing. So that is why I'm respectfully requesting the council support these two changes to the code.
Thank you, Director. We have Counselor Crabbe.
So just for clarification, you're saying section nineteen fifty-seven and all of these exempted businesses. Would now be paying excise taxes or occupational taxes?
No. They do not, they are current, they are, these exemptions that are listed here currently apply, all of them, even the ones that are.
But you're asking for that to be removed?
No.
No, nineteen dash fifty-seven is actually increasing the number of exemptions that we currently have on the books. To come, to align with state code.
Can you turn on Travis's and mine at the same time, please?
Thank you. All right, quick question. So number fourteen, so are real estate brokers exempt or can you explain that to me?
Real estate brokers are exempt, except when there is a principal office or main office. Or a branch office of the real estate broker that's located in Muskogee County. And they are transacting business in the state of Georgia. So if you're a real estate broker and you sell properties over in Alabama, you do not have to pay occupation tax. On the, those Alabama sales, only those transactions that occur in Georgia. If you are a real estate broker that is, say, working out of the office of a firm of some sort. It is usually the firm that is paying the occupation tax, not the individual real estate broker.
Okay, I have a question. Maybe you can explain this to me. So typically, real estate companies have independent contractors. Which they make commissions. So. I guess my my question is, is the real estate company responsible for the total commission? As far as paying occupational taxes or the the portion or percentage that the company retains?
Because it's a pass-through account.
Right. So as an individual, as a real estate company. You are responsible for the paying the occupation tax for the commission that you earn as a company. And you can, as the company, exempt those. Commissions that were paid to the real estate brokers for transactions that happened out of state. As well as the transactions that occur within Muskogee County. Because it is the firm, like real estate brokers in general are exempt from occupation tax. It's the firm that is responsible for paying the commissions on those commissions that are earned in Georgia.
But only the portion that the that the brokerage firm retains?
That's correct.
So the the remainder that they pay to the realtor, their portion of it is not taxable for occupational purposes. It's it's taxable for income purposes on the agent.
That's correct.
Okay, we needed to make that clear because we've heard some.
Can we have that put in in writing? Well, I'm gonna tell you, well, just to make sure we have a consistent message.
Okay. Okay.
Can that be added to fourteen to for clarification purposes?
Yeah, we can add something, but we've got to be real careful and specific about what the agent gets as income versus paying as occupation tax.
The brokers, the brokers, there's like three licenses, because the firm's gonna be licensed, the broker's gonna be licensed, and the agents that are assigned to that broker are gonna be licensed as well. So it's whoever's earning the money. If and you just follow the money. So if if the firm, whatever they collect, they're not responsible for what they've collected and paid back out. Unless there's some type of preemption that they they pay with that. But, yeah, it's it's, you only pay, and I'm old, so it's been a while since we've done it. But you only pay for the amount of earnings that are retained by each different entity. Whether it's funding that is earned by the firm, which is licensed different from the broker. Or the broker does their own business within the firm, and they're gonna be taxed based on the earnings that they claim on their. Their tax return. And then the individual agents are gonna be paying to the broker in in most setups. A portion of that that the broker will then be rolling into the whole amount earned by the firm.
No, the broker pays the agent. You had that backwards where we, the agent pays the broker. It's actually the broker is paying the agent.
Well, you're right. I'm sorry. I was talking about the division of the money. You're right.
I I really would like to maybe have that, just for consistent purposes for employees and.
Well, let's talk about what we'd like, if if can we.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Talk offline.
Sure.
As far as making that adjustment.
We can, we can work on the language and send y'all a draft.
And then the residential property rental businesses are exempt from occupational taxes.
That has not changed. They're still exempt. That's a local exemption, not a state.
That's correct.
Because that would be really hard to calculate.
But now, if you want additional revenue, though, that is a local exemption.
Okay, so that hasn't changed. And then the other, the other thing is it makes reference in section two. It makes reference to nineteen fifty-eight B, but nowhere in this does it say what. Section nineteen fifty-eight B actually says.
Well, that's not changing nineteen, nothing in nineteen fifty-eight B is changing.
Right, but we, it's not in here. It it says nineteen fifty-seven, and then it goes to nineteen fifty-nine. But it doesn't have any reference in here to explain what you're referencing as nineteen fifty-eight B. So we don't know what we're saying. We don't know what we're saying. We're just, we have to look that up.
That's right. That's just the nature of legislation. B is, fifty-eight B is. Occupation taxes living on business. Be the owner, proprietor, manager, secretary, or other officer of the business. Subject to said occupation tax shall at the end of the preceding year and on or before April one of the current calendar year file. A form furnished by the revenue collection officer, a signed return, et cetera.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, Councillor Tucker?
Yes, my my main concern is really for the small business owner or any business owner, to to be honest. I know we probably process nine thousand plus business license on a yearly basis. And I know you're saying approximately three hundred. Could it possibly be more, you know?
It's less than three hundred.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying. Could it possibly be more than than that? So I I would say for us to have this conversation now on December tenth and then it goes into effect January. Would it go into effect January once we?
Yes, it would need to, because we are preparing for next year's renewals. So we would have to work with the software vendor, work with our IT department to make all of the necessary code changes.
All right, so if we had this conversation maybe like six months ago or. I just feel like it's too short of a time to implement something that will impact small business owners. Say, I'm Winnipeg, and I I depend on making these quarterly payments. And then now, two weeks out, you're gonna tell me we'll only have between April, well, January and April to make my payment. But my quarterly payments before was, what was the quarterly payment process?
You essentially paid one-fourth of what you owe.
Know what I'm saying? Like, what was the dates, like?
It was April first, the first quarter was still due. Then July thirty-first, the second quarter was due, the third quarter was due October thirty-first. And then the fourth quarter is due the subsequent April first.
So now you're talking about somebody who's probably like a little man on the totem pole as a business owner. And they're able to spread out these payments and actually make payroll to pay their employees or whoever the case may be. And actually buy, you know, products and materials, even though it sounds like three hundred or less. It might, we don't even know per se. I know that's.
No, I know for sure. It's less than three hundred. It's about two, it has averaged over the last three years about two sixty, two sixty-five.
So actually seeing it, and I know we're seeing it, but seeing, but seeing it and actually having that evidence. I just don't want to hurt the the small business owner. And and possibly put them on a path where they're no longer a business owner. And for us to make this decision now and then they have between now and April to kind of reprogram. I honestly, I would prefer to wait like a year, like this is a conversation that we have right now. And then have the opportunity for those individuals, even if it's just three hundred, for them to be able to plan for this. I don't know if, you know, you all had a conversation with those individuals prior to?
I've mentioned it before in the council meeting as in terms of one of the changes that we would like to bring forward. I mean, there are several other changes that we would like to see happen, but I know specifically. Doing away with the quarterly payments has been something that has been said very publicly by myself. It's also been something that we've been telling the people as they come in to renew, is that, hey, just so you know, you're coming in, making this quarterly payment. But next year, this probably won't be an option.
Yeah, I'm, I, just me personally, I'm not too comfortable with that, because I understand the the small business owner. Who might really depend on this. And I I'm just not comfortable with making that decision right now for them to have to make their payment in in April. Now, we, if we could plan and have kind of like a a year's time for those individuals to kind of get on, you know, uh. In their mind, making their own little payment adjustment, but not for us to make this decision right now for people to have. Have to kind of readjust their their business structure.
Well, there are things that we could do to help those individuals in terms of what they're paying. I mean, when you're paying your occupation tax, what you're doing is you're paying your taxes on what you actually earned for the prior year. And then you're paying on an estimate. And so for those individuals that may be impacted by this particular change. They could estimate something in terms of that estimate that's a little less than. What they've done in the past, knowing that that following year, they're gonna have to true it up.
So I think one, another concern is deflating, you know, your actual profits. So instead of us getting in so much, you know, occupational taxes from certain individuals. You you might start cutting corners or doing all kinds of stuff so you can ensure that you make that payment on by April first. I'm I'm just a little frightened.
Yeah, I hear you. I I really do. I I, you know, one thing I will say, though, is that if we do not make this change. We will not have online renewals for next year.
And and.
Because the current software system that we have is not conducive with the quarterly payment from an online renewal standpoint.
Yeah, is that, I was just about to ask, is that the, and, you know, yes, we're having a conversation on outsourcing. I I just, like I said, just twenty twenty-five, for me, it's it's a no. Twenty twenty-six, you know, yes, but.
I'm okay with it either way. Just, I just want to be very clear, though, as far as the online process.
So did we look at other, is there any other online processes that could take the quarterly payments? Or can you have a hybrid system where you just allow those ones that are paying on a quarterly basis to to actually? They they would have, they can't do online. They would have to come in and make the payment.
It's just not efficient, but I mean, we can do whatever.
I mean, we're saying less than three hundred. So I know, I mean, y'all, we done went from eighteen fifteen to twenty-three. I don't have all the numbers in front of me, but it looked like we're doing a pretty good job right now collecting the money.
And twenty-three is not realistic, I mean, long term. That was because.
And I'm saying twenty-three, twenty-three million.
Right, that's what I'm referring to, to twenty-three point eight million. That's not long term. But, you know. You know, in terms of the renewals, you know.
We're not, we're not gonna have online by April twenty twenty-five or.
Uh, yes, we were on track to have online renewals by then.
We are on track to start by April, so.
Yes, we already have the online excise taxes for hotel motel and the online excise taxes for the liquor, for the mixed drinks.
Okay.
And so the next step was the online renewals.
Can we just have it where if those individuals want to pay quarterly, that they would have to come in and make those quarterly payments until twenty twenty-six? I mean, because it's a choice to, is it a choice to do online? Can you still come come in? I mean, you you got mom and pop, they're probably doing paper still. Is it mandatory for them to do online?
No, it's not mandatory at this point in time, but that would be something that we'd like to get to. Because the city of Atlanta utilizes the same system, and they do not allow in-person renewals.
And I understand, that's a whole nother situation. Yeah, but you, I don't even see making it mandatory for some of those ones that's, and I'm sure you all know those ones.
We do, we have those people.
That's gonna come with all their paperwork.
That do come in for us to help them with their paperwork.
Yeah.
But, you know, again, we're just talking, we're talking, what we're talking about is gaining efficiency. And it we either go and move forward with efficient processing or.
Well, I I would ask if we could do a high, a hybrid for those those.
It's just that the return is different. I mean, we have to. The tax return would be completely different. I mean, we would have two sets of tax returns that we would be. Operating with.
Well, we need, and we need to be mindful of the fact that if we operate those two different systems, because you remember what happened last time? We thought we were doing a benefit, providing a benefit to the public, and we delayed some of the fees that they had to pay. What we did, we compressed the time period that they were gonna be able to work.
I'm still for it.
The process.
I I just, I can't hurt hurt the the small business owner.
Man. Got too many lights on here. There we go.
So, you know, we've been talking about the use of technology, and I think we're getting there. You know, and and so this would be the final piece of. Use of 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 technology. And we need to get there. And at the same time, you know, though we've made this great progress. We've asked, you've asked for an RFP, and we're gonna do an RFP to con, to to look at contracting out. Revenue. Division, collections. And so with two hundred and sixty or so. That that would be. um, that, that would be, um.
Well, can we put like a grandfather provision in it of some sort?
Let me finish, let me finish. Uh, uh, you know, I, I would say I would ask that council, um, pass the ordinance and, uh, but, but effective, um, twenty twenty-six, there, you would not have an option. And so we strongly encourage those two hundred and sixty to, um, come in line if, April one with the ordinance. But if there are those who can't, then we work with them, but December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, they will not have a choice. And so that would be the hybrid system. But we need to move forward. We need to, to get automated and, um, and move forward. And this would allow those, um, a- and, and I, I just, my, my guess is you say two sixty, um, they may be, uh, they may not, those may be the ones that won't have a problem. We just don't know that right now. And, and they may be able to adjust to the automation in April, um, along with others that we're mandating do it. And there's no problem, but there may be a few that's out there that we, we've got to give special attention to and have a hybrid system. But the absolute drop dead debt line would be December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, I mean, uh, twenty twenty-five. And so I, that could be an amendment if, if, uh.
Can we make, make that amendment?
Yeah, just, uh, make it in the form of a motion.
I mean, what was the, the, the dates again? What did you sign?
Well, this would be effective, uh, the ordinance would be effective, I guess, now. But for those small businesses, the two hundred and sixty or so, uh, um, who need additional time, they, whatever process we use to accommodate them, the absolute debt line for full automation, for, to include them would be December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, however, whatever that says in the motion.
Can, can you hit the city attorney so he can?
Uh, you can propose an amendment. I think the only way to do it is, uh, allow one more calendar year of quarterly payments for only those businesses that use quarterly payments in calendar year twenty-four. And it's gonna be an administrative headache for finance and others and, but that's the only way to do it. I would say that persons, businesses utilizing quarterly payments during calendar twenty-four may also utilize quarterly payments in calendar year twenty-five.
Well, and, but I would use the word in there, calendar payments are encouraged now, but.
Yeah, that's why you say may utilize that same option.
Yeah.
Clerk of council, did you get what the city attorney said? I would like to make that motion that the city attorney made.
All right, can you read the motion back, Madam Clerk? Oh. Hang on. We got every light in the house on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion is to allow one more, uh, year for quarterly payments during the twenty twenty-four. Um, and then, uh, they may also use for twenty twenty-five.
Well, only those persons or businesses who have utilized quarterly payments during calendar year twenty-four are eligible to use quarterly payments for calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
And then the effective date for all annual payments will be January one twenty-six.
Okay, so that was the motion. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Let's see. Okay, yours is to the motion, too. All right, Counselor Davis is on there first. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Ms. City Attorney, I, I hear what you're saying and that's probably the most neutral way to do it. I would think that, uh, my colleague makes some great points. The, under extreme conditions or situations, and there's gonna be some just by the fact of the way. Did we, when we sent notices out, reminders and all, did we tell them that we were gonna, this is what we're gonna do?
We told them when they renewed.
Have we sent notices out?
We, we have not sent additional notices out, no.
But nothing in, in writing?
I mean, um, I mean, the only thing that we send out currently are the quarterly notices, the quarterly payment, the bills.
But it's not in, uh, nothing in writing has gone out.
There's nothing in, in writing that has gone out that says.
And that's okay. I asked that question because it's, the, the turn of the year is what, fifteen? Add a couple more days, fifteen more days. So, uh, you know, you do have people that, that plan and they do their budgets and they have operating budgets, which, you know, it, it may be difficult to, small business to pull out of that twelve-month operating budget. Now they gotta like boom, they gotta do it upfront. It's gonna have a, you know, somewhat of a impact to, to, to come up with that revenue. I, I, I'm with my colleague. I think that we, we owe it to the citizens that we let them know that this is where we're going and we're having a public hearing today. So people need to know that's what we're changing to. I think that's the goal, right? But the goal is automation and one of the questions, uh, I was gonna ask to this point was, a- a- and, and again, the citizens need to know this, what we're, what we're talking about today. Uh, cause somebody's gonna, you know how it works. Somebody say, I, I didn't know. I, I, I didn't know. I didn't. And they don't watch the council meetings and that kind of stuff. So, you know, the concern about springing it on them and then having an option. I like options, I think, for twenty twenty-five to this amendment. That's why I'm gonna support to have that option under extremes conditions or situations. And, and I think the city attorney is saying we can determine who those individuals are, uh, that have been used to this. They would probably be impacted. We can, we can say they'll probably be impacted. Uh, but the citizens need to know the goal here, and I guess the goal is, I mean, I, I would ask the question, doing this, doing this is gonna provide, uh, is, is it gonna be an opportunity to, to better collect? That, does, is it gonna improve collections? Or then you go back to, is it gonna hinder collections? Uh, I, I think that option would cover that. And then everybody knows in twenty twenty-six that this is the way we're gonna do it. Uh, mainly because of the automation request for automation and us trying to get more current, modern, digitized. Uh, that's what we're doing here today.
Okay.
Uh.
All right.
Well, just a minute, Mayor. I, I go back to what you just talked about. The, the, the known situations, that really covers it in neutral and that would be termed extreme conditions or circumstances that, uh, might disrupt the operation of a business. And they'll have that option to be able to go in and, and, uh, you know, and just, just make sure over the course of time that things are, their bills are being taken care of and bills are being paid.
Only for persons or businesses who have used quarterly payments the twenty-four calendar year. They can do it one more year.
Yep. Right, good.
Okay, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, listen, I'm all about efficiency and I'm all about paying online and all this kind of stuff. But we need to be business friendly also. And so I'm just, I'm curious. How many automated systems did you look into for this, for these payments online?
Um, we looked at, um, specific municipalities, not necessarily specific systems. Um, it, we receive, uh, much like, uh, all the other departments, um, correspondence from, I don't know, several businesses that offer occupation tax systems, I guess I should say. Um, and in looking at the governments that have these different systems, none of them offer a quarterly option. So.
Did any of the, did any of the businesses offer quarterly options that have reached out to you or that you reviewed?
Uh, not specifically, uh, I'm not sure of that specifically. A- all I know of specifically is.
So you never looked into that option?
Well, I'm thinking about it from our current system and what the capabilities are for our current system so that we can move forward right now with automation.
Well, I don't, I don't like the mandatory that, you know, everybody has to pay at one time. Small businesses, they pay their federal taxes quarterly. They pay, I mean, everything is quarterly for them. They, you know, trying in a, a new business, trying to estimate what your annual income is gonna be for the next year. And, you know, you live month by month when you're a small business. You could have a great January and you could have nothing in February and March. And then you have, it's so unpredictable, especially the first couple of years of a business. We want to be, we wanna help these businesses succeed and stay here and stay open. We don't want to add additional burdens to them. I would like you to look in and see if you can't find an automated system that allows options, not shoves one, one choice down their, their throats. And add more problems for these businesses to succeed.
We'll certainly take a look at that, um, when we look at different systems. Cause I'm gonna say, just in full transparency, um, I would like to see what other options are out there in terms of the licensing and permitting, um, software systems that, um, we can utilize. Um, the only caveat to that is there, there are some efficiencies that are gained internally, um, with us utilizing the same system as inspections and codes, um, from a permitting standpoint. So it's not just the business license office that utilizes this particular system. But in full transparency, I would like to see what else is out there and will be, and plan on doing additional research.
Can you go to this company that you're, and ask them if they can create a system, an IT, you know, go to their and, and fix their systems so that they have an option of annual or quarterly?
Uh, we can ask for sure. I can tell you based on the testing that we've done and the material that we have reviewed, both myself and, um, IT, uh, that's very unlikely that they'll modify the system because it's not a system that we own. We're hosted and it's in the cloud. So it's not, um, there's very few customizations that we, um, can have with this particular software.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, um, we can continue to look at those, but I, I do believe the amendment with the, the hybrid system, um, would, would, for the next year, uh, would take care of those concerns of those two hundred and sixty-plus small businesses.
We've still got a few folks, uh.
I, I, I will vote for this if there's, if it's a mandatory after one year, if it's mandatory that, you know, they have to pay it annually.
Yep.
So there's gotta be some wording in there, you know, for now, we can always come back and fix it on the back end. But I'll not make it mandatory, you know, starting twenty twenty-six. When we, if we can come back and make it mandatory at a later date, but right now, I, we need to change that messaging so, so it's not mandatory now.
Okay, well, we've got, we've got it on, on the table. We've got a few more people that wanna speak to it and they may feel the same way you do. Counselor Allen, Mayor Protem, excuse me.
Thanks, sir. Um, Ms. Alexander, are you aware of, of any problems the two hundred and sixty-five businesses have experienced? I mean, do they communicate to you a struggle to make this payment, other than quarterly?
I, I'm unaware, but, I mean, the ones that make the quarterly payment are typically the ones that always make a quarterly payment. So, you know, it's just an option that's been available to them. And like I said, I, I'm, I'm unaware of any particular hardships as far as the quarterly payment option. I'm not saying that there won't be those who would prefer to pay it quarterly. Uh, that those just haven't been e- expressed to me.
Okay, the, the other thing that I, when I was reading through this, I noticed that there is a, uh, if you pay the, the, the occupation tax before April first, you get a two percent discount. Is that right?
That's correct.
So it's to their benefit to pay it early. If they, do they, do they get a discount if they spread it out over four quarters?
The, the, the two percent discount still applies. However, if for any quarter that they're late, then the, um, penalty applies to the full balance.
To the full balance?
Mm-hmm.
Even though they've already paid, wha- whatever they've already paid, they still.
Well, the remaining balance, I should say.
Remaining balance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I, I, I guess I just have a concern that we're trying to fix something that doesn't exist. And I, I understand the leniency trying to help a business, a small business particularly, but I haven't heard anybody having any problems. Well, we'll see, but, uh, we're, we're gonna do it for a year to give them a chance to phase this in. And we'll, you're gonna communicate to them the process, is that correct?
Yes, we can most certainly send some communication to the two hundred and sixty plus.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Counselor Huff?
Yeah, I wanted to make a recommendation. Uh, if we're moving forward today, would be possible to, uh, grant the finance director the ability to bring in some temporaries to work with the small businesses that may need assistance during this period of time. She said it would be a nightmare in working through the two systems. I'm asking if, if, if she had problems in her office, would it be?
Wait a minute, you're not, like, not on.
Available to her.
And so, Mr. Mayor, you know, um, if, if, um, assistance is needed under the city manager's authority, I, you know, I will, um, send people to her.
Okay, that's all I'm asking. Okay.
Okay, Counselor Kogle?
Um, I'm not, uh, as a small business owner, I'm not sure why I would communicate my financial problems to, um, other people. But, um, if we are making this efficient by going online, what, we are freeing up time to be able to, um, deal with the people who are coming in on a quarterly basis, who are already coming into a quarterly basis. So we are, I mean, we're, we're not, I, in my mind, I, I don't think that we're slowing ourselves down by remaining, um, just remaining in service to the quarterly business owners who are already coming in quarterly to submit their businesses. We're making it more efficient for those who are, who want to process online. And so I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm failing to see where the inconvenience is for, um, the finance department of dealing with the three hundred. I mean, we, and early in the conversation, we said three hundred and the way it was communicated was it's just three hundred. And it's just three hundred. And now we're saying it's three hundred and we can't deal with three hundred. So it's either just three hundred or it's three hundred and we can't deal with the three hundred. But I, I think we're making it efficient for other people to come in so that they don't have to come into the, the business license office to tie up the, um, to tie up the clerks and to, um, spend time waiting in line. Um, so I, I, we're, we're making it efficient. We're not making it inefficient by remaining in comply, or remaining to continue to have this, this quarterly payment system. I, I, I really, I, I don't feel comfortable tying a date to, um, the motion of twenty twenty-five or December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I, I just, I think if. I think it's going to get brushed under the rug. I think we're going to forget about it. Um, and it's, we're going to put our business, our small businesses in a predicament. And we're just, we're going to forget about it, uh, because in, a lot happens in a year. And I, I just, I don't feel comfortable tying a date to, um, this motion. And so, uh, for that reason, I'm not comfortable with that.
So my statement was that it was less than 300. Um, not 300, but less than 300. And in terms of the inefficiencies gain, um, it would be for the business. Um, I, the people in the finance department will still be required to review the online submissions as if that person was standing in front of them. We have got to make sure that we have all the paperwork to include those forms that are required by the state that we have to collect annually. Um, so from a review standpoint, from a processing standpoint, we're not really gaining efficiencies internally. It is to the benefit of the businesses and the individuals that they don't have to come into our office to submit their applications.
Okay, hang on. Counselor Chambers?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, um, you know, small businesses are the economic, I mean, they, they are the engine um, of any community from a creating jobs and things of that nature. Um, you know, as a small business owner, I do believe that, um, instead of paying a lump sum and being able to pay quarterly, I think that's more accommodating for small businesses. So I really would like you to benchmark and maybe look at a few other companies um, that can, um, make modifications to the system on the backend to accommodate what, what we're asking for. And I do know companies do do that. Um, but we need to make sure that, you know, we are looking out for our small businesses. I believe in automation. I believe in streamlining. I believe in efficiency. But at the end of the day, I know a lot of small businesses, I mean, they struggling just to try to make a payroll. So I just want to make sure that we are providing the tools and the resources, um, for our small businesses to be successful. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, uh, there was a motion and a second on the floor uh, to provide, um, anybody that had filed quarterly in '24 would have the option of filing quarterly in '25. All right, so that's the motion and the second. Looks like all, all, all comments have been, been stated, so I'll just call the question. All those in favor of that amendment, please say aye. Yes.
Yes, the motion still does include that all payments for automation for, uh, 2026.
Okay, so starting in, with December of '25, they would start with that, right?
Yes, uh, ending December 31st, 2025, all, all, all payments would be, uh, automated.
Okay.
Starting in 2026.
Well, we'll, we'll call the.
Um, Counsel Tucker made the motion, so if she wanted to make that amendment.
I don't believe that mandatory automation was a part of the motion.
That is what the city attorney, that the city attorney did come back and add, that that part, um, that the automation would begin.
You can strike it if you want to, the, the.
Have to be electronic. All right. So we've got about three iterations of this, so help me get it right.
In, in effect, it leaves the quarterly option, so.
Okay, all right, so, so that's the only piece of that amendment is left is to allow them, if they filed electro, uh, if they filed quarterly in '24, they have the option of going forward filing. Okay. Well, let's get through this question and then we can make another motion. Well, you haven't, how about turn your light on so that we can? There you go.
The way it's written right now, it's talking about those that would pay quarterly now can continue to pay quarterly. But we need to think about new businesses that are coming in. But I think we've got that covered by striking that comment about all businesses in the future would have to pay annually. So I'm just trying to kind of work this through in my, my mind to make sure that new businesses can have the option to pay quarterly too. I mean, we can encourage the businesses to pay online and pay annually by giving them that, you know, that 2%. So, so I think as, as we have it written now, do we agree that that, that continues to be an option for new businesses?
Well, I think we need to add that or just strike the, who used the quarterly in '24.
But what, what I'm hearing from finance director and from the city manager, if, if this becomes a burden, we get an influx of people saying that, uh, this is just not working, they're going to work with those folks. They're not going to force them to use that. If they can't make the payments, that's what I heard.
I don't want to make it law, I don't want to make it law. And then they, and then, you know, based on, you know, if we're, if they're willing to work with the small businesses, then let's just not make it law. Let's just not make it mandatory, because then it's, then it's up in the air for interpretation.
So we, where we are from a, um, motion standpoint is we need to, if, if you want to make a motion that, that it is for anybody who wants to, regardless of whether they filed in '24 or not, they'll have the option of filing quarterly.
Can I, can I make a comment, please?
Yes.
Um, so the code section that allows a quarterly option has been in place since 1995.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty, hm? No, since 1995. The code has been effective since then. If you want to allow businesses to still pay quarterly, whether they do so now or in the future, then you just strike the changes to 19-59. The problem that I've said before with doing that is we've been talking about automation and moving forward and gaining efficiencies for the citizens. With this current system that we have, and I guess we can look at other systems in the future, but we're dealing in the now. What we have currently, it's not conducive to have the quarterly payment option with this software system. Also, it's an additional burden on the staff to try to keep up with, to have two different sets of forms, one for the online folks and one for the people who pay quarterly. So if you don't want to make any changes, the code is as it is right now where they can make the quarterly payments.
Yeah, and you could just strike the, strike section two in this proposed ordinance in its entirety.
Yep.
If you just want to leave it alone the way it is.
Just won't be going online with this new system. I mean, with the current system that we have.
Say that again. It's.
It's, it's just not conducive with the current system that we have to make it, make a full push for online renewals.
Right, so I don't.
Yeah, it is not, yeah, the software that we currently use is not just for the revenue division of the finance department. It's also utilized by, um, inspections and codes, um, and planning and engineering. So when we go look at something else, we have to all collectively come together and decide what we're going to get moving forward.
This company, we use this company all throughout, you know, the government. So you, I would think that if we went to this company and asked them to fix this glitch in their system for us, they would do that. But we haven't even asked them yet. So I, maybe we should table this until some of these things are asked and some of these things are worked out. I think this body has kind of let you know what we're looking for. It's, it's a more integrated, you know, with options, not something, just one choice, that's all they get. And so maybe we just table this until you can look into that and then we move forward.
And of course, you know, it looks like, I, because if it's not done, if, if first reading does not go forward today and you vote next Tuesday, it's over anyway. Because the new year starts January 1st, right? So, um, it, you know, it, it appears we are headed, if you don't vote and take some action today and then second reading next Tuesday, you know, it's tabled anyway. Because I, it, you know, it will not take place before the first of the year. Business licenses, uh, will be due April 1st and it can't happen. And so you, you basically wait another year. And so, um, and so going to, um, what the city attorney pointed out, whatever section you mentioned, you could just do that today on first reading. And then second reading is next Tuesday, and then that's all we'll deal with for the next year.
Yeah, well, you, you can deal with section one, the exemptions, making them all clear and amend the real estate broker subsection. You can do that and pass it next week. But strike section two of the ordinance.
And, and we'll just have to revisit this next year.
Okay.
If you're willing to do that, yeah.
All right, there's a substitute motion to table this then. Just pull it out of this.
The substantive motion is to pull out section two.
Okay, all right. All right, to remove section two from consideration. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right, motion and second to that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Those opposed?
Okay.
Two.
All right, so it, it passes. It'll be tabled, it'll be pulled. Item two will be pulled out of there.
Section two is struck. We'll bring back section one for a vote next week.
Okay.
And then we'll revisit this, uh, mayor, next, next year.
Yeah, Counselor Davis? Just, uh, just remind us, Ms. Attorney, what section one is?
It's just the exemptions from the occupation tax, uh, in Columbus exemption from the local tax. It's 18 exemptions and we're going to amend, add some new wording on real estate broker exception.
Well, Mayor, if I may, when I, I know I expanded my thoughts on the motion to amend, or to the motion that was on the table earlier, but I did ask about the goal. And we talked about automation. One of the things, Madam Finance Director, I was going to ask about the improvement of the efficiency of, of, of collections. And, uh, you, you had stated efficiencies, but do you see that as being more efficient as far as collections and, uh, trying to progress from that standpoint in, in the operations of the department?
With additional staffing, yes. We are certainly more efficient with the temporary staffing that we've been authorized from the city manager.
No, 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 that's not what I'm asking.
Okay, what's your question? I'm sorry.
Well, I, I hope so. I hope if you have more people, you're, you're, you know, you're more efficient, but no, um.
Oh, with the online processing?
Well, I talked about automation and then I talked about collections, okay? If, if you were to go to what you were requesting today with ample notice to the businesses, then you get to that point, the one payment, would that allow the department to be more efficient in collections and may reduce the workload?
Not necessarily a workload reduction, but, uh, more efficient with collection, collection of payment for sure. Because, um, with the online portal, um, businesses have the option to pay either by credit card or by electronic check. Um, and we usually receive those funds within two to three business days into the bank account as opposed to the mail.
And I know that you've probably looked at other communities and other cities who have done this. And I'm assuming that that's what they're doing as well in the state of Georgia?
I couldn't find another municipality that offers the quarterly payment of occupation taxes.
Well, uh, you know, and, look with, uh, when you look with your, your taxes in general, whether it's federal or state, I mean, there's options on either side and you pay late, you're going to pay a penalty. You pay early, I mean, you just pay what you estimate and you may have to pay more. You may get a refund. But, you know, it, it, it is what it is. But I'm, I'm going to remind the council about the recommendations and the findings. Though, we just had an audit update. And we have been pushing for automation and digitizing for a long time. So it just seems like we're going to push it off another year. I think with the options, the options, uh, allow a business to get to a point where they can start escrowing. And really, when you look at it going into '25, a business, if they know what they're going to pay, would be able to escrow that over the course of a year so they can make that one a payment and make it efficient, okay? I'm a small business owner and I look at it from that standpoint. I can do that. I can't do it with late notice, you know, because I've already approved my opera, my budgets and my operating budget for the year and I need that. I'd have to pull it all out and I may not, I may fall short in another month that I wasn't anticipating. But with plenty ample notice that I, in escrow, would I know I'm going to have to pay from January or April of now 2026 or 2025? I guess that's what we're talking about. I, I think I can do that, but certainly you need to get everybody on the same page. And, you know, I did not vote for the motion because I think we have given instructions to strategically come up with plans to move forward and automation is, digitizing is a key. Now, are there options out there to that? Maybe, but I, I think, uh, uh, that was one of the things that, that was important to me and is important to the citizens. And we're, seems like now we're pushing it off another year. And even if we even get to that point, so we'll still be one of the few that are not automated. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Okay, Ms. Alexander, by striking that section two, uh, that's, that's where, that's where I read the 2% discount. Do, do the, do they lose the 2% discount or?
No, I mean, by striking the changes, everything remains as it currently is, which includes the discount.
There's currently a discount.
Before April 1st.
If you pay before April 1st.
2%, 2% discount. Okay, Counsel Tucker.
Yes, I'm, I'm still trying to wrap my head around why we can't go in automation. Um, still with just making sure that we give that benefit to those small business owners. Um, I guess I can talk to you offline about that. But I, I do have, um, a question. And I know that we have this, um, I guess the first part are the exemptions. Uh, the ones that's in red are the ones that you're adding as exemptions?
Yes.
And, uh, is it possible for us to go over it? Because I see exemptions like blind persons and then you got disabled veterans. And what, what is the exemption? What benefit will they, these individuals actually get?
Um, in term of, in terms of what's listed there, the, the exemption is to the occupation tax, um, and the, um, associated administrative or regulatory fees. Um, so for disabled, um, veterans, um, or, um, veterans just in general, um, that served and, and retire, um, there is a certification process that they have to do, um, that's in accordance with the state law in terms of, um, them, um, receiving a, a letter of certification from the Department of Veteran Affairs. Uh, but when they bring that to us, they are exempt from paying occupation tax, administrative fees. They may operate within our county, uh, free of those taxes.
Um, is it, is it possible if we could do some type of presentation in regards to those ones that are listed now that have not, um, received this benefit, that we let them know, especially you have a lot of, um, individuals retiring, you know, from Fort Moore or, I mean, anybody within these categories. That way they know exactly what incentives they have for being a, a, a business owner in Muskogee County.
Sure.
Yeah, cuz I don't, if you don't go to this attachment and this actual item, you, unless you have it on your website or how are we promoting this information so people will know that they actually have this exemption start? And it starts next year?
Well, no, no, no. It's all, it's already in place and in the instruction, uh, packet that we provide, we do list those exemptions there. So it's already in the materials that we provide, it's just not in the code that's on the city's website. So we, um, provide a listing of the exemptions in the instructions for the occupation tax. And what we're doing now is just putting it in the code so that it's all in one place, um, for people to see. And, um, because when you go out to the code section now, you only see, I believe, eight exemptions that are listed there. It's eight, eight, maybe, I think it's eight, maybe it's 12, I'm not really sure. But you only see what's currently listed there and I just wanna update it to make it align with the exemptions that are applicable to...
Yes, because you, I, I have received several questions in reference to disabled veterans or, or veterans, you know, in general regarding exemptions and, and, and they don't know. So these are individuals that actually have sat down in the audience and they said, can you please, you know, get more information regarding, um, veterans being exempted? I mean, they, they are actually in business and, and don't know. And I don't know how they don't know, in their opinion, occupation taxes. So I'm just saying that this information needs to be shared because people don't know.
Well, that's part of the reason why we wanna put it in the code, because it'll be a good reference point for those businesses to go to one place and see what all, uh, may apply in terms of the exemptions that they have from a occupation tax standpoint. Uh, but yes, I can certainly do a presentation. Like I said, it's not just that you're disabled, uh, that you're a veteran that...
You have blind persons and...
Right, so there's paperwork, right, that's required in order for those exemptions to apply. And it is only specific to those individuals, right? So it's not, um, it doesn't apply to a business that, um, maybe is sold, that was, um, owned by a veteran, sold to someone else, that exemption does not carry on to the next individual.
Right. Thank you.
All right.
Everybody clear on that, the six new exemptions that are being added?
I think so. No further questions.
All right.
Is that it on that item?
It is.
Okay, the next item, Mayor, we've got a resolution approving a special exception to allow for daycare type 3 in a building at 2913 Rees Road. It's in an SFR2 zoning district.
Motion second to approve.
Uh, hang on just before you vote, let me ask anybody in the audience, want to be heard on this petition. It is a public hearing on a special exception daycare. Is this Mr. Isom?
No, this is Reverend Johnson, CEO of Reverie Baptist Church and it's our privilege to have Mrs. Isom, Vicki Isom, addressing the mayor, Mayor Protem and city council. That being said, um, we had this previously, uh, shut down in '21 due to the COVID. That being said, uh, this, this community really would, uh, benefit from this. Uh, we would get more daycare provided for the, you know, the families that are looking there for that. Uh, as you know, it's been a few struggle for hiring people, getting people, workers and, uh, when we come out of COVID, then, you know, that was that, that we was trying to get the, the pay for the, uh, the workers increased. So it was, it was quite a struggle. But in the process, uh, we shut down in '21. The facility is a very, very, uh, efficient facility. And the cribs to go, uh, cribs to college, excuse me, um, we had actually contacted them back when we had to shut down the preschool. Searching to different places that was out there, uh, we come to find out that, yes, they could accommodate the kids that we had at the time. Unbeknownst to us, we have a relationship here today and so, uh, we're proud to, uh, allow, if you will, this, um, company to come in, use our preschool facility and to go forward. For it to sit there like that is, is really, in our, in our community, is, is a loss. And so we're looking forward to partnering with this, um, company. And seeing it go forward, it will increase their, um, volume, capacity, and they can almost double. And so that's gonna add more jobs to the community as well as, you know, providing a great need that we have right now. Because y'all know we're real low on the amount of daycares that we have in our community. So, um, thank you for your...
Yes, sir. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for all yours' support. Thank you.
All right, with that, it's ready for a vote, Mayor.
We did have a motion and a second. Councilor Davis is this to the, all right, all the, well, we can put it on the screen, I guess, can't we? All right, councilors, if you would, please register your votes.
Davis is in the affirmative?
It is. It's in the affirmative where it's, it's unanimous, okay? It's approved.
All right. We've already handled the Recorder's Court judge's, Mayor, that's all we got listed.
All right, good. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Councilor Davis?
Thank you. Uh, look, I, I'm gonna talk about probably what be, will be a sensitive matter to some few, but it, it's important to me. Ms. City Attorney, I'm gonna ask you your advice. I know that, uh, a while back that, and I've been thinking about this for a while and I just can't, um, I can't come to an agreement with it. And I, I think this council needs to talk about it because there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. When we did a lease agreement with DBAH, um, I guess the attorney that was negotiating the lease, not this council, this body, but ultimately the finger's gonna get pointed at this body, um, we approved a lot of things that was in that contract. One thing that was in that contract was that the city would get a complimentary box out of it. I've got problems with that. And, and I think I have valid reasoning to, to support that. I think there's a better way to do it and, uh, quite frankly, being involved in baseball these years, I don't, under the circumstances, I've, would argue that I have not seen that done before for several reasons. Now, if that was taken out, Mrs. City Attorney, what would you have to do? Can this body make an amendment to that?
Not at this time. I mean, it's all been signed with that provision in there. Now, I suppose if the council wants to, uh, disavow the benefit they've been granted, they don't have to take advantage of it, but it's part of the lease, so...
Well, my recommendation would be in lieu of a box, um, that tickets or seats would be the right way to go. And, and I'm gonna tell you why. One, we don't even have a policy. There's gonna have to be a policy, okay? Two, we, who's gonna make the decisions? Because I don't wanna be that person and I'm certainly not gonna be the subject of that controversy or being scrutinized from that standpoint. Two, all the things that come along with these perks, I mean, who's gonna, how's all that gonna play out? Whose pocket is that gonna come out? I just think that, you know, I'm gonna have a hard time talking to my constituents and tell them why I can't take them to participate and be a part of something that is theirs. So I go back to, we don't have a policy, we just made an agreement that attorney threw into the contract. And I, I've got a problem with that because I just don't think that you're ever gonna be able to deal with that and come up with the right circumstance of where it's gonna be, uh, acceptable by the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. There's gonna be controversy, there's gonna be scrutiny, and I don't wanna be a part of that. That's one reason I'm bringing it up, but I'm doing it in enough time that you can make the adjustment before the season starts. And my recommendation would be to give them a chance to go out and make their sales and to sell it, but in lieu of tickets. That way you can control tickets, it's a whole lot better and it's somewhat like the Civic Center, but, you know, Ms. City Attorney, you've got, we've talked about this many, many times, but you're gonna have to, you're gonna have a hard time explaining ethically why it's not some sort of a gift or a political gift over time, depending on the individuals who are making the decisions at any given time.
I mean, you're still allowed as an elected official a certain de minimis gift and the $100 has been in state law for years and years, but if you exceed that limit, then that should be part of your campaign disclosure. That's the way it works.
I think a seat is far less than $100, but a box is far more.
Well, and that's something that, uh, the mayor, I'm sure, can talk to the manager before the season and if it works out that, you know, informally, they can agree that tickets are given in a certain amount to the governing body. That can be done in lieu of...
I don't know if anybody's even thought about it. I don't know if anybody's even thought about it, but, uh, I'm bringing it up. I know it's a sensitive subject because I've got real concerns and I think it should be done in a better way so we avoid controversy and it's just above board because it could be abused over the course of years, depending on who it is, in many, many ways. And I just have a problem when I go to the ballpark with some of my constituents of why they wouldn't be able to have an opportunity to sit in a, in an air-conditioned box. I'm gonna have a problem with that. And, uh, so to make it where everybody's on a level playing field and everybody's right, you do tickets. Look, when I played, they would not allow us to negotiate boxes, okay? You couldn't, you had to negotiate seats and there was a reason for that. And I'm saying the same thing here, that I, I think we need to, uh...
This was in a version offered by the DBA, so I think it's pretty common with baseball stadiums, but...
No, no, you're wrong, you're totally wrong.
Let the mayor talk to the manager before the season starts and maybe you can work it out where it's tickets and if you don't want them, you don't take them, just like the Civic Center tickets. But if you take them and they're over $100, then you may be subject to campaign disclosure.
I would think that would apply to the box as well, because they're essentially seats.
That's true.
And they're more expensive seats.
But it may be that it can just be done on a ticket basis and not a box basis.
Well...
But the language is in the lease, so the language is there. Why don't you let the mayor work informally with the manager of the team?
Well, I'd be happy to talk to the general manager because we've made, we've had the same conversation. Because I, matter of fact, the way I put it very bluntly is you're not gonna catch me in that box. So I'm not, I'm not going to the box. What we talked about was, um, the possibility of the city using those for like boys and girls clubs and, and, you know, maybe, uh, if you've got a, a company of soldiers from out of overseas, let them go. Because, uh, because I, I agree with you, just even if they say it's fine in the lease, we appreciate them trying to sweeten it, I, I would, I would not feel good about going...
Well, like I said, complimentary tickets or you, there's some kind of tickets in lieu of that you can pass out would be the way to go.
We'll ask them, we'll work it.
Take care of that, but...
There's a way to work it out, just like Civic Center ticket.
You know, I, I present it because, I mean, this body is a governing authority, but we're, you know, it's all gonna, the finger's gonna get pointed back at us. And I just don't see any way, I've, I've, I've been bouncing this thing through my head a long time, I just don't see of any way to come up with a policy that there's not gonna be some sort of abuse. And again, over time, depending on when, who it is, where, under the circumstances, it's gonna happen. And, um, anyway, Mayor, I'm sorry, but I just had to get that...
No, it's all right. I mean, folks in my office that want to have already bought tickets, season seats, so... All right, well, duly noted. Councilor Hickey?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I, I agree with, uh, my colleague, Councilman Davis, uh, and as to the comment that the city attorney made about, uh, anything exceeding $100, I think that, uh, Ms. Mayor, I would ask that when you do talk with the management, that we treat it as such like with the Civic Center, but let, let the tickets that we, that you negotiate, let it be under $100. Then that way we don't have to worry about that, that being a problem at all, anything exceeding $100 in, in, in gifts. So, or, you know, we can just buy our own tickets, you know, so... But, uh, I, I agree with Councilman Davis, I just feel like this, this could really end up being an issue for this council. And, uh, we, you know, we wanna, want our constituents to know that, that we're, we're not, you know, up here, sitting up here to, to receive those, any kind of favors like that, so, so I agree with you.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep. We did. The, uh, next is public agenda. First up is, uh, Ms. Pat Frye. And if you would, uh, just give your name and your address. If you wanna limit your address to the city that you live in, that's fine.
Good morning and, or, is it afternoon? Thank you for having me. I'm joined with, uh, your, your colleague, uh, Ms. Browder has chaired our point and time count committee, um, for Muskogee and Russell County for the past four years now, I think, five? Participated for the last 10 to so, but, but chaired it for the last several years. Um, and again, we're just here to announce that, uh, it's that time of year again, we're getting prepared for our annual point and time count. And for the new councilors who may not be aware, point and time count is a mandate from the Department of Housing and Urban Development that every two years, each community do a full count of those experiencing homelessness in their community. It's a full count, um, in our community by design. We don't do a partial count, um, but we do a full count every year, which means we go into shelters and we, uh, then survey and enumerate those who are in an unsheltered manner. We do this through a survey that's about 17 questions. We do this through a survey that's about seventeen questions. It's a standardized survey, so everyone gets asked the same questions the same way so that we can assess needs and then make referrals to address those needs with the ultimate goal of going from homeless to permanently housed and, and sustaining that housing. As you can tell, I'm not gonna read the slides. This is for your edification. But the Point and Time Count this year is going to, oh, I'm sorry, next year. It's almost 2025 anyway. Is, is going to be done a little bit differently in that we're not just doing one night for the shelter and one day for the unsheltered. We're going to be doing a four-day count this year. Last year, we had some feedback from some of our volunteers that they wanted to go back out to be able to go to some of those, what they called empty camps, to see in the days to come if people were there so that they could possibly offer some assistance. So we said, yeah, let's, let's do this. So, on the twenty-seventh of January, we're going to be doing, into the shelters the same way we always do. We'll head out about five-thirty or six o'clock to the different shelters in our community. And that'll wrap up probably about eight-thirty that night. The next morning, we'll have breakfast about five-thirty in the morning. And then we will hit the streets at six o'clock in the morning with the help of law enforcement across Muskogee and Russell County. Sheriff's Departments, Police Departments, all, all escort our volunteers. And we will go out amongst all of the highways and byways and under bridges and long river walks and, and everywhere else. Holly has, has done her, her patrol on the, on the Riverwalk with her crew on the golf cart for many years and, and really thought she could have some, just a moment or two just to give some insight as to why she does it every year and, and, and what, what, what she sees and how it's evolved over time.
Thanks, Pat. So this is very important for the community for all the reasons that Pat said. From our perspective, and I get a lot of questions like, why are you involved? Why do you do this? We see a lot of homelessness in our parks and in our community. And this is a great way for us to be able to help and be a partner to, to help these individuals, to move them from their current state into the possibility of being housed long-term, which then helps us as the city. So we're trying to be proactive, not just reactive, but proactive to help these individuals. So for me, it's always been about how can we give back? How can we help? How can we provide assistance? Pat and her, her folks over at Home for Good have always been huge partners for us. And this is just one way that we can give back. To her point, yes, I've been involved for probably more than ten years. I've done the day-to-day as far as going into shelters and doing the Riverwalk and the external. Because many times my staff and other staff in the city, we see those homeless. We see them in our bathrooms and our parks, in the dugouts and in various places. So we're very much a part of the process to be able to say, we've seen someone here or someone has shared that there's someone here living. And so that we're able to get a full picture and be sure that everyone is counted. So I'm grateful for the opportunity and for Pat's wantingness, I should say, for lack of better words, to allow me to continue to help.
Thank you. And we'll be doing training starting the second week of January. For those who are doing the survey, everyone has to go through a training. So we talk about HIPAA, we talk about sensitivity, and we talk about, you know, feeling culturally appropriate and sensitive. So I will be sending everybody a link to come attend our training or just come visit us during the count. Thank you.
Pat, thank you. We appreciate what y'all do. I tell you, it is so, it's critically important to try to, because there seems to be a growing population, not just in Columbus, in fact, in other areas. I, I speak to mayors from other communities and their acts, their growth has actually accelerated compared to ours. But, but it's just a byproduct of what Ms. Elamine talks about. Housing that is not available, not quality housing, not at an affordable rate. So it's, it's a big challenge and, and you guys are doing your part and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Tucker, did you have?
Yes. I want to thank, you know, both of you. Thank you, Ms. Pat, for all the work that you do. And, you know, I just remember my days working on the continuum of care with you. And you do have a great point in reference to the parks. And we know we have like many tent cities being set up, not just at Frank Chester, but even at, at Shirley B, towards the back. You can see some of the tents lined up. And I was kind of shocked when I started seeing that when we were doing, you know, our walks, morning walks. You wanted to say something? I thought you was gonna say something, I'm sorry. But I, I will, I would like to ask this mayor, I'm not sure, is it possible for us next year, when she comes to give this presentation, that we can put it on your agenda? That way she can share this presentation with the community? Because I think it would be good for the community to see the numbers and all this good information.
Actually, I'm not sure why you guys are on Public Agenda. Anytime you're gonna give any kind of report from United Way or anything to do with.
Yes, sir.
If you just call me, we'll put you on there right out the gate.
Yes, sir. Well, you brought up affordable housing. Ms. Elamine brought up affordable housing. Just a reminder, we, we are in the midst of a housing market needs assessment, not only for Muskogee County, but for our eight-county region to include Russell County and Lee County in Alabama. And Alan from Georgia Tech is out, is, is in town this week, actually, going and looking at some things and starting to pull some data, talking about consolidated plans, strategic plans and those kinds of things. So you brought it up. We're, we're trying to, to address it from, again, the proactive side rather than be reactive.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, Ms. Veronica Flakes Jefferson regarding support with Gun Violence Awareness Walkathon. Welcome, ma'am. If you have something to pass out, the clerk can, clerk can get that distributed for you.
Good afternoon.
And if you would just state your name and where you live.
My name is Veronica Flakes Jefferson. And I'm here to address you on a community awareness event that we are sponsoring. We have gotten a parade permit from the city to have a community awareness fundraiser parade on January twenty-fifth. And my reasoning for doing this is because four male members of my family have been murdered by gun violence. It started with my uncle Leroy Jones, August twenty-fifth of 2024. And this was a widely publicized thing that happened. He was murdered on his front porch and there was a manhunt for him in Lee County, Alabama. Next, my cousin, who is Sidney Jones, his grandson, was murdered in Phoenix City because he was at a club minding his own business and someone tried him. So he was murdered. Next, my cousin, Scotty Harris, was murdered in Columbus. He was walking home from a front porch and he was shot, mistaken identity. The one that's closest to me is, and is recent, is my nephew, Laquaye Willacy. He was shot by someone who we called family, his girlfriend, on Decatur Court, which led me to want to do something about the gun violence in Columbus, Georgia, and Phoenix City, Alabama, the surrounding areas. I work at Rainey McCullough School of the Arts. I've been there three years. I retired from Lee County, Alabama Smith Station High School for twenty-five, twenty-eight years where I was a counselor. Since this year that I've been there at Rainey, we've had to go into lockdown because they were serving warrants in this area. We have to do something about the gun violence. So me, along with Rainey McCullough School of the Arts, Mr. Jerome Williams from A Call to Talk, Mr. Chris Brown from Cure Violence, Reverend Jase Flakes, who is, he was here, but he had to leave. He had another appointment. Fourth Street Missionary Baptist Church, Mayo Inc., Ms. Teresa Mayo. And the Place to Be Event Center, Ms. Evelyn Jacobs. We are wanting to make this community, which is the winning community, aware that we're not afraid. We want to stop the gun violence. My nephew was not a model citizen at first, but he had gotten to the point where he was talking to the gang members and turning them against being in a gang, carrying guns. He was, he started working at Popeyes, not a great job, but he was making an honest living. And he was turning the streets, the men, the boys in the streets around. So we want to continue that work. I have a home in Wenton, which was my childhood home, that I'm still paying taxes on here in Muskogee County. I live in Alabama, yes, but I do still give money to Muskogee County. I work in the area. I'm a proud graduate of Carver High School. Yes, so I am in this community. I do have ties to this community. And I want to see this community remain the proud community that I grew up in. So why have a parade in this community downtown? People, people go downtown. Why not put it here where we are? Let them know that we love our community. We want to parade through this community and show them that we're not afraid. We want to end this gun violence. We want you to come and be a productive citizen. And I'm asking for the support of the City Council. I want you to support us if you can be at the culmination, which we will start on Decatur Court where my nephew was shot. And we're gonna go up A Street, down Ilges, down Rigdon and in at Rainey McCulloughs. We're gonna have speakers that have been impacted by gun violence. And if any of you can be there, we ask for your support. Questions, anything?
Well, first.
The walk is gonna start at ten. We're gonna start registration at nine. We're gonna have transportation to take the people to the starting point. And then we're gonna start the parade there. I already have my parade permit if any of you need to see it. And we hope, and also, as I said, this is two-fold, as you will see in the information you have. I'm gonna, we're starting a scholarship fund called Life Wins. And we came up with Life Wins because that's Laquaye Willacy initials. And it's gonna be a continuing scholarship that we hope to grow into something that we can help more than one student impacted by gun violence. So that is our reasoning for starting that. And it's Life Wins because we want people to live and we want their lives to be impactful.
Well, first, let me say, to be impacted in as many different ways by violent crime, I, I will pray for you. That's just an incredible, incredible thing to have happen. We will, we'll do everything we can to be there and to support you. And, and I just, I spoke with my chief of staff. He'll catch you before you leave today and see if you have been able, you made sure you got your escort from the police department and all that stuff so that we got the roads blocked. And, and if there's anything that you need help with in that regard too, we can, we can help you with that.
Thank you.
Councilor Huff?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for being here this morning. Good to see you again.
Yes.
Take time to contact our clerk's office and have her to send us all an email to remind us, because we're going into the holidays. So we'll get probably a fresh email first of the year, reminding us that we need to be there. It's the twenty-fifth, right?
All right.
Okay, okay. But thank you for what you're doing. It, it would be nice. When I was President of the League Baseball over at Shirley Winston, we started a parade like that in the neighborhood, coming down North Star, going back into the park. So I think it'll create some interest in the neighborhood.
Yes.
Thank you.
I forgot to mention Ms. Tia Willacy Baskin, which is Laquaye's sister, my niece. So I forgot to mention her.
And you have Chris Brown with you, so he knows how to find me.
Councilor Hickey?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Jefferson, I just want to say, I think what you're doing is a great thing. And also, I'd like to just piggyback on what the mayor, Ms. Mayor, had said about getting in touch with his staff to contact the police department for any assistance from them with this. That's, that's one of the main things I just, I wanted to cover also because, you know, just always make sure that the roads are blocked properly and you have the, you know, the proper escort that you need. Because a lot of motorists in town probably won't know about your event. And then that way, at least you'll have the police there to help you along your path, you know, to be safe and things. So thank you for, for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, listen, we wish you a lot of success with it. We will, we intend to be there. I'll check my calendar and if there's any way we can make it, I'll be there.
Thank you. It's gonna start on Decatur Court in Columbus, in Decatur Court.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right. Next is Ms. Teresa Elamine, representing Southern Anti-Racism Network regarding CPD training needs and why good public policy matters.
The longer I sit, the more it hurts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Attorney. Another informative meeting. Today is International Human Rights Day all around the world. Every December tenth, my sisters in the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom in the many time zones, it's late in the day in Africa and in Europe, but they've been standing up for the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. Those thirty articles are really about public policy, the right to housing, the right to education, the right to healthcare. Those are human rights that we celebrate. But unfortunately, in the United States of America, we don't have that right to healthcare. We don't have the really right to housing. But that right to housing is being challenged everywhere in the world right now, everywhere. And in this community, the investors have taken over. So when we get the eviction count in January, I think we're gonna see that the homeless increase has a lot to do with families. Families, good people. You can't say that you're a good city if you don't do something about poverty. You're not a good city. You're a business city that supports businesses. And all of this discussion about businesses, you don't talk about poverty. Well, good public policy matters and doing something about poverty matters. I will come back next week to talk more about solutions because you have to repair the damage you've done for the last fifty years, but also the damage that you've done for nearly two hundred years founded during slavery in eighteen twenty-eight. So when you celebrate two hundred years, I want to see that reparations ordinance, Mr. City Manager. We can talk more because it's about injury, not about lineage. So there are a lot of poor people in this community who aren't black too. People don't see them, but when I go around the Mill District and in some other areas, I see them. I want to just say quickly, because my other topic about Columbus Police Department, when you do the kind of rapid hiring that the police department has done, you run into training issues. And I had some really strange experiences in November. And I did call and email Lieutenant Malone on November thirteenth. An officer came who's been on the force for only about a year. And as he stood at my door, he never took his hand off his gun. I was so afraid. I started crying. And then the corporal came up and started talking about a dead cat under my house. I called for the sergeant because I know when you get that kind of strange behavior, you call for the sergeant. you call for the sergeant. The corporal called the sergeant and told the sergeant not to come. I called back and I say, Sergeant, come. Sergeant came. He was so bad, I slammed the door and emailed Lieutenant Malone. I've gotten several calls, but that's the downside of rapid hiring. There are lots of people on the force with a year or less. And it's not just me. As I talk about this condition in the community, people said, one person said, they hired a bunch of people from my school. I said, how they doing? And she shook her head. I do want to talk to that Lieutenant Taft or whoever called me back about this problem. There's a problem. It's dangerous with that many officers with guns who need the kind of training they need. I'm sorry, I've gone over. Forgive me.
That's all right.
Uh, there's a council meeting next week?
There is.
I will sign up.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'll, oh, oh, uh, deputy, oh, this is a gift for everybody. Oh, thank you. Um, thanks to people who support it. Uh, you'll see yourselves, some of you in there. So, there's one for everybody around the table and two for the clerk's office. Uh, so enjoy.
Thank you, Ms. Southern.
Mr. Chambers. And sorry, Mr. Garrett is not here, but I'll catch up with him.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, thank you so much, and I'll see you next week.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Um, Ms. Natalie Nicole, Role Model Academy of Arts Regarding Public Works Concerns in the Engineering Department Regarding School Zone Safety. And Ms. Nicole, you have five minutes?
Yes, sir.
And if you can't finish, you can come back at the end of the meeting for another three.
Yes, sir. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Henderson, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, as well as those in their respective places. Uh, my name is Natalie Nicole. Um, I'm a dis, I'm a resident of District 6. However, I'm a small business owner in District 7. And I'm here today to, uh, discuss some concerns as it regards the Engineering Department and the Public Works Department. As a veteran, oftentimes you have the luxury of wherever you land, making it a home. And so, Columbus, Georgia is home for my family. I am from Jacksonville, Florida. However, I went into the Army in 2000. And I lived most of my time in Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri. And we spent some time here, um, in 2009 through 2012, where I got a degree from Columbus State University. So, I consider Columbus, Georgia, home. And that's why I'm here today because home is important. And as we transition into the new year, there's some concerns, um, as a new business owner in District 7 that I have ran into. And, um, more so opposition. So, specifically, um, concerns with Public Works. Many times, um, I have put in requests using the app. And when I walk around and I pick up trash in the mornings, um, I expect for the app, when it says use this location, to provide the correct address for what it needs. However, what I've found is that it's not correct. And then the, uh, the request will come back as addressed, but it hasn't been addressed. And that's been a, a consistent issue. Requests being submitted, then it being, um, returned addressed. However, the mattress is still there. As of September 29th, there's a mattress still sitting on the side of the road. And it's visible. But when I speak to people, um, it's either we can't see it or we can't drive around, we can't expect us to drive around and look for tires or look for mattresses. And so, if I can see it passing by, it's visible. And, um, I just would like some, some support in that area. As a business owner lending my time, along with my husband and other people in the community to clean up, when we need assistance from Public Works, um, oftentimes, it's an inconvenience to have to keep re, uh, submitting requests because they're saying it's addressed. However, it has not been addressed. And there's a long email history of things that I have submitted with pictures. Um, so, I don't want to take all day going back and forth, but the evidence is there. And it's a concern that I would like, as we transition into the new year, that I not have to continue to go through again and often. Um, moreover, the grass. Um, we started the business there in, um, April of this year. Mine is my heels. The grass was as tall as me in certain areas. And it shouldn't take that I had to come there and say, hey, this is a problem, that it be addressed. And then it took months before it was addressed. So, I see, I, I'm there early in the mornings to pick up trash. I'm there a lot. I spend a lot of time there at the business. I see Public Works out. I see the white trucks passing through, picking up trash, um, that are, that they can't pick up with the other trucks. So, they're present. And I see codes and inspections. I've talked a lot with Mr. Ramirez. He told me that the mattress that's still sitting there today was closed out in October, October 10th or October 1st. And so, there's not been a follow-up. And, and mainly with that is as a businessperson, I can't continue to dedicate a lot of time calling, emailing, trying to get things done that I feel like should be done with, within a first request or a second request or what have you. So, overgrown grass, um, is a consistent issue. And what I learned is that there's a four to six weeks, um, mowing schedule. And I'm just hoping going into next year that that's gonna be improved. Um, most lawns, my, my lawn, two weeks at least. Um, I have to have someone come out and continue to mow it. So, four to six weeks. Um, in an area where a school is for little kids, I, I don't feel like that is appropriate. I think that the business owners in that area should be held accountable to ensure that their property is up to par as it regards the codes and, uh, regulations. I don't feel like Public Works should have to come out and mow other people's lawns. However, if we put in a request and say, hey, that this business owner, their grass is as tall as me, that the process is streamlined so that it's not taking 30 and 40 and 60 days for it to be fixed.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, my time is up?
Yes, ma'am. If you, if you want to, if you have some more to, to share with council, you can, uh, come back at the end of the meeting for an additional three minutes.
Yes, sir, I'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Counselor Kogle?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Nicole. I know, uh, you and I go back and forth quite a bit on, uh, on email. Um, and I know, uh, we got your, um, we missed you last time you were here. We went super long. So, I know we did get, uh, a lot of what your comments were on, um, the school zone as well. And so, um, and I think for the school zone that we, that we, that was discussed in your, um, your email before, I had mentioned last council meeting that that area, I believe, um, Director Vance had taken care of with City Manager. Um, but I know that there are some other school zones that, um, Ms. Nicole and, um, Ms. Ledeni have brought up in, um, over the last couple of months about restriping those zones and making sure that those are very visible because the kids walking across, uh, walking across the street and drivers going back and forth, um, are just not able to see those, um, those zones. So, if we can check that out. Um, but the particular area that, um, Natalie is talking about is up in, um, in the Rose Hill area. And, um, I know when, when I received the email communication from, um, from her, we were able to take, uh, action on that in a, um, appropriate manner. Um, sometimes it requires a little bit of back and forth. But, uh, going into the spring, now that we're in the, the winter, if we can regroup for, especially the spring, for addressing some of those issues. Um, I know I've, I've driven through as well and, um, put in some 311 requests for trash as well. Um, but there is some areas in the Rose Hill area that really do need some attention as far as, um, as far as lawn mowing and, um, just simple trash pickup, bulk items. So, I don't know if there's a way that when our Public Works goes through, if they're able to tag that when they go through to pick up trash, if they can drop it into, I think, at one point in time, we had, um, mentioned, um, that there was a way for the trash, uh, truck drivers to note, uh, bulk items. I don't know if that's still an option for them, um, to make those notes. But it's, uh, in my mind, it's a, uh, see it, fix it, um, situation. So, if we could pay attention to that, that would be great.
Thank you. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, um, I had a question in reference because I think that, um, Ms. Natalie brings up a good point regarding the 311 app. And I do know, because I've done it before, um, sometime I have to be, go in and be a little more specific when I'm on, kind of, I, I would just say, I was at St. James Church, and there was some dumping over there by Reverend, um, Hughland's Church. So, I kind of, I put in additional notes to say that it was at the intersection of, you know, North Star Drive and St. James. And then put in, like, it's the third house down, um, just to kind of guide that, um, that ticket. But when we close the ticket, um, and if an individual has any experience with, um, like, customer service and, and IT world, we always have to put certain notes in. Um, if it's something that we can create, instead of just closing and not annotating exactly what the action was done, whether, because sometimes, in reference to what she's saying, that it's, it's saying that it's completed, but it's not completed. You're just closing the ticket because you don't have enough information. So, if we can let that be like a trigger, um, where we get more information or, or close it and say, we don't have the information, um, in reference to that. But also, when we're closing tickets, to put act, the actual action that was done. I mean, it, it just helps for, um, you, you, um, Deputy City Manager looked like she wanted to say something.
Uh, yes, um, that, that is exactly what we're looking to do. We met, of course, with 311, Inspections and Codes, and Public Works, uh, a few weeks ago because of some of the ongoing concerns that, um, were noted to us. Uh, and that's one thing that we know that we need to do. We've got to do a better job on the department side so that when they're closing those work orders out, they're actually putting in exactly what has occurred. Uh, and so that when it goes back to the citizen, they know they're not, it doesn't just say closed. They know that the item has been picked up or the item has been, whatever that notation is. Uh, they will let that happen and, uh, you know, let the citizen know about what's going on. So, yeah, we're working that. We know that also 311 is gonna be coming and providing counsel with an update and, um, showing how the app really works, all of the functions and, and those things that, um, the public needs to know. Everybody really don't know how to work the app sometimes. And so, we're gonna give that demonstration as well on all of the points of the app. But we are looking to make some improvements on the app because we know that there are some things that we can do a little differently. Uh, and so, uh, Danielle Frazier, our 311 manager, is working that as well. So, we are in the process of making some changes to that.
It is most, most appreciated, um, and helpful. It was a, a time, you know, I was going in, putting in multiple tickets, um, throughout the week. And then it's kind of got a little complicated. So, I know I was probably warning Ms., um, Frazier to death because I just started sending the emails. I was like, I, I just.
And it's not necessarily the app that is the issue. You know, it's a lot, again, goes back to the departments and the information that they're putting in that goes out to, uh, the citizens. And so, they're working that a little better, making, um, putting more, uh, information in as they close that app out. Uh, I know that she specifically mentioned there was a mattress that was still out there. Uh, and I think that's 13th Avenue, 24th Street area, somewhere there about. The mattress is on private property, of course. We don't clean up on private property. But what we've done with that is submitted that to inspections and Codes. And when that happens, it takes a while to, once you put in the notice, give the property owner, yeah. So, that's a process that we go through. We just cannot go onto private property and clean up.
Yeah, and I, and I absolutely want to note that 311, when we're putting in tickets, it's not just Public Works. It is, in fact, code enforcement and some of the other departments.
Absolutely.
So, it's not just, you know, one department. It's multiple departments within CCG. But I think that's a great addition. I look forward to seeing that new change. Thank you.
Yeah, and, uh, as the Deputy City Manager said, you know, I asked them to pull the three departments specifically together, 311, um, Public Works, and IT, um, because I was getting information that if 311, um, transfers a call, let's say, to Public Works, you know, they can't stay on the line and hand that person off. They hang up. And then on the other end, at Public Works, the phone keeps ringing. It goes to voicemail. Then they gotta call back and say, I, you know, it went to voicemail. Or, um, you know, if it's not on a voicemail, if, for some reason, then they don't get an answer. And so, they're working through
Right.
those things, uh, the three. And where, um, and, and to resolve the problem of, you know, someone saying it's been complete and I can't see it over here on my end, the system is not. And so, they are working to, to repair that, if you will.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, and Deputy City Manager Goodman, I just wanted to say, uh, that's, you, you brought up some good points. But mainly, a lot of citizens don't know this, but you touched on due process. You know, uh, so many times, uh, the, the city can go out and give notice, but the citizen doesn't really take action if it's on private property. But even if they write them a citation, everybody by law is allowed due process. I think it's like 15 days or so many days they got to clean it up. Well, sometimes they'll just take it and move it to the other side. You know, some, the same thing like cars parked on the road, you know, if the police go out there and they move it, they moved it. And then it starts all over again. They have to write them another citation. It's very monotonous. But, you know, the city's hands are tied on, on some of that stuff. But it's hard to explain that sometimes to the citizens. But, um, you know, Ms. City Manager, I know that, uh, you had been working on some crews that would go out and, you know, I noticed improvement in many places. They would go out and start strategically working on litter and things like this. Maybe not on private property, but I think they're still out there. I believe they're still out there.
That, they are, yeah.
And then one thing that's been helpful, and look, I, you know, I've had some great experiences with 311. That's what I do. I mean, I, sometimes I call directors or, but most of the time, I go through the, it's no magic to it. I use the 311 app too. But it's a, it's a channel that, it's a call center and a channel, and it's written. And sometimes, look, I mean, you, people get things, you know, they don't always get the right information, but it goes to another department. It goes to the department. And then, you know, depending on where you are on that work order list is when they get to it because it's a first in, first out, right? And, but what I've found out that really, really helps, you know, and this is a FYI for the citizens, is that you make sure you give that strategic location. It's really difficult unless you give that street address and strategic location. I'll give you a case in point. You know, I called one in that was at the intersection of Manchester and River Road. I think one of my colleagues might have done the same thing, but I couldn't, I had no address, okay? So, that's all I could say. But it was like three corners and then some over on the side. I mean, it was stuff everywhere. Well, they got half of it, but didn't get the other half. But I just called it back in. I mean, I called it back in and, and they came back eventually and got it. But understanding, that's hard for somebody when they go out there to interpret. So, I always give, try to give a strategic landmark or strategic address, you know, uh, street address, uh, so they can pinpoint it. And I always give them my number and tell them if they have any issues or they don't understand, call me. And a lot of times, they call me. Those supervisors call me. They call me and ask me, hey, I don't see what you're talking about. And I'm like, did you look? You know, and then we work it out and it's, it's done. So, those things do, do work. And I, look, nobody's perfect, you know, and sometimes things. But, you know, you just call it back in, talk to them.
That's right.
Get them to call you. You know, and usually that supervisor goes out and checks things out. And if they got their number there that citizen wants you to call, they'll call back and they'll say, hey, what, what, you know, I see it, I got it. Or, hey, I'm not, am I seeing everything? And then you can commu- everything? And then you can communicate.
The more information you give us, the better.
It works for me. And Ms. City Manager, while we're on the subject of these, you know, I'm passionate about these signs on the right of way. And I know we've got, you know, we've got, I guess, options for like real estate agents and elections. And I think even on special events, they can come to you and you can give them that timeframe. But you've got specific requirements that go along with that. But where are we at on the, look, they're disrespecting the city. They're disrespecting me, you, the mayor, everybody with these signs. And it just, it's just constant. And we've got to up our game on that. I know we got, we're working on that. But it's almost like just a slap in the face. But I went out last week and picked up probably, you know, 15, 20 signs that, you know, the wind blows or whatever, and it's all over the streets and everywhere and all over the right of way. Well, you know that. And what is that? That's litter, right?
Right.
We've got a no tolerance litter policy. It's a form of litter is, is what it is. And we just, we have an ordinance and we don't allow that. But it seems like that we've got certain actors that keep doing it over. They don't care. It's blatant disregard and they keep doing it over and over. And I hope we can continue to crack down on that and enforce it. And maybe even get CPD involved to determine who some of these out of town characters are. You've got some, some out of town characters that are coming here and just, it's for business. They're making money, you know, but they're abusing our ordinances. And it, and, you know, it's, it's, it's site and it's pollution, site pollution. And it takes away from the character of your community. One or two here and there, but they put them everywhere. And, you know, I just, I hope that the addition, I think you're working on it. You know, maybe you can give us an update on that?
Yeah, I'll come back with an update. But, but she said mid-year. We were going to do the positions and we're going to do some weekend work and all that, you know?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mayor, if it's okay, I want Director Beck to mention striping. That was one of the issues.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Ms. City Manager, City Attorney and Counsel. To address some of Ms. Nicole's concerns on the school striping, we have, working with the school district, they identified two more crosswalks they feel that could be beneficial in the area of her concern. We have turned those over to our striping contractor. We've also been working citywide in school areas. We've got about 40 crosswalks that have been turned in to be striped by peak pavement markings. So you should see a lot of new stripe around all the schools. It's deficient. And so I wanted to let y'all know the update on that.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dan. All right, Ms. City Manager, I believe it's your agenda.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of items. I've got a lease renewal for the Naval Reserve Center.
Motion second to approve the lease renewal. Any discussion on that? All right, not hearing any. You've put that on the screen for me. Thank you. Counsel, you can select your votes. All right. Counselor Chambers, you, you, yeah.
Okay, I've got assistance to firefighter grant.
Motion second to approve the firefighters' grant. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none, we'll put it on the screen and.
While they're voting, Mayor, this will fund the purchase of 26 LifePak 35 cardiac monitors for Columbus Fire EMS.
I know Chief Scarp is here, so if there's any questions on that. All right, that's approved.
I've got a few purchases. I've got.
All right, we've got a motion second to approve all of the purchases. Is there any that anyone would like to have pulled for further discussion? All right, if you would, please put it on the screen. And please remember, you'll vote for one, you'll vote one vote, but it will be for A, B, C, and D of the purchases.
So the first one is public safety uniforms on an as-needed basis. The second one was safe streets and roads for all. It's an RFP. C, a consultant for grant application for, and construction project management services. Metro is trying to get some federal, $10 million in federal dollars for transit campus construction renovations. And so this would be a $10 million grant if they can be successful. D, for firefighter, excuse me, for Fire EMS, is for transit 350 HD van. This is going to be for that mobile integrated healthcare program to visit patients as needed. And so you're familiar with that. Those are the purchases. I've got a few updates today. The first one is Georgia Department of Transportation project update with Kenneth Franks, Georgia DOT. He's the TIA administrator. We've got staff here, Will Johnson. You want to introduce him and say hello?
Yeah. Good afternoon. Want to introduce a couple of guys that are an absolute pleasure to work with. And yes, they work in government. So I know you find that surprising. But Kenneth Franks and William Easton with our TIA office are here today to update you real quick on our T-Sploss projects. And we've got Jim Liviston here with the River Valley Regional Commission, which that is the area that the T-Sploss covers. So I will turn it over to, which one, guys?
Kenneth.
Okay. All right, come on.
Welcome.
I think we've got a presentation.
Yeah, they'll put it up in a second. And then there's a clicker there.
Okay. Thank you very much. As, as Will said, I'm Kenneth Franks. I've been with GDOT for roughly 22 years, and I've been with the TIA program for the past eight or nine. It is a, what, from my perspective, it's a really great program. It gives local, local regions the ability to move transportation projects with GDOT's assistance and also take funds that they receive directly and move projects on their own. A little bit of back history about what TIA is. Back in 2010, the Transportation Investment Act was passed. It created 12 special regions across the state and gave each region the ability to levy a 1% 10-year sales tax to move projects in their region. 75% of the 1% sales tax goes to fund the projects on the each region's approved investment list, with 25% going directly to cities and counties via discretionary money. And that goes once, once a month. So every month, the Department of Revenue collects the 1% sales tax. It is then transitioned over to GSPIC, and GSPIC disperses out the 25% revenue and holds the 75% revenue for reimbursement from GDOT whenever we send monthly reimbursements to GSPIC. So it's kind of a reimbursable program. And in certain aspects, it's a double reimbursable program. GDOT's in charge of delivering the program, but through that program, we can allow locals to deliver their own projects. We've got a great history with the city of Columbus. Columbus delivers about half of their projects, and we assist in delivering the other half. We worked through that. Whenever Columbus delivers a project, they would pay, pay any cost. We would reimburse them, and then we'd get reimbursed through GSPIC. Transparency's super important with us because we're spending taxpayer funds. All, all our reimburseables and every project expenditure is captured on our website. If you go to our website, you'll see how much we've spent on every one of the projects to date and what phase each one of those projects is in. So we're currently operating in four regions across the state. CSRA, Heart of Georgia, and River Valley were the only three regions in the state that passed it whenever the ballot referendum came up in 2012. Since that, that first 10-year period, we've actually went back and passed the secondary extension of those three regions. And all three regions had a yes percentage go up in each individual region. So we like to think that that's a sign that we're doing a pretty good job with taxpayer revenue and utilizing it appropriately. Southern Georgia saw the good works that was going on in Heart of Georgia, and they passed the referendum in 2018. And actually, this past year, they actually put the extension on the ballot as well, and it passed and went up on the yes percentage. So that kind of lets you know what's going on across the state as far as TIA goes. TIA 1, what, what that equated to for River Valley, we collected a total of $512 million over the first 10-year period. That was $384 million to fund the projects on the approved investment list. And in River Valley, that was, what, '22 or '23? Yep. And $128 million was dispersed via discretionary funds. So that went out to the cities and counties throughout the region. And that equated to roughly $28 million and some change to Muskogee and Columbus. Yep, that's there. And that discretionary formula is calculated on an annual basis based on your current estimated population and road miles, the old LARP formula. And with that, I am going to kick it over to William and let him briefly talk about some of our project-specific updates and some of the projects that we've worked on.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm William Easton. I'm the regional coordinator for the River Valley region, which is Columbus and then all of the, all of the surrounding areas. First, we have the ones that we've completed in Muskogee County. We have the South Lumpkin Multi-Use Facility, Columbus River Walk, the Custer Road Interchange, and the 219 passing lanes. All those are really good projects. And then currently under construction, we have the Buena Vista Interchange. Well, I'm sure y'all are aware of all three of these. We're estimating that to be complete the summer of next year. Old Casita Road Interchange, estimating that to be completed fall of 2026. And the Veterans Parkway widening up in North Muskogee County and Harris County, estimating that to be complete in the, towards the end of 2026. We also have two local delivery projects being handled by the Columbus's engineering and planning offices. That's the Spiderweb Project, which I believe is going, be going to construction here soon for the Phase 2. And then ongoing coordination with Metro to finish out their first 10 years doing operations and maintenance and that park and ride facility. So these are the current collections for the TIA 2. So this started in January 2023. As of October, we've collected a total of $126 million. $95 million of that's gone towards the investment list projects, and 31 and a half have gone to, back to the counties and cities in the region. The TIA 2 program actually has 45 projects in it compared to the 23 in the original region. And to date, Columbus-Muskogee has gained about $7.1 million as of October. And now I'm going to go over some of the projects that GDOT's delivering and their design status. The first one's the Buena Vista Road. This goes from Wynton to Annette. The total budget, so this includes design, right of way, and construction and utilities for all projects, is $10.7 million. We are hoping to have this let by the end of 2026. What we're looking to do is a three-lane typical with sidewalks, trail, and intersection improvements throughout. And we're currently working on traffic projections and environmental screenings, very early in the process. And our next milestone is hopefully having a concept report towards the beginning of next year. The next one is Second Avenue, State Route 85. That goes from Manchester Expressway to Tabletton, also 19th Street. Total budget for this one's $18.2 million. This is a ban 2 project, so we hope to have it to construction by the end of 2029. This includes streetscapes, trails, sidewalks, intersection improvements. This one also is working in conjunction with a full-depth reclamation maintenance project along State Route 85. So we're working closely with that other project team to make sure that these go hand in hand. They'll be working on the road. We'll be working on the outside with the trail, streetscapes, intersection improvements. And also, the next milestone's a concept report for this project. Then these are our two federally funded projects. The first one is the JR Allen US AD Ramp Improvements at Blackman and Schaumburg. Total budget's $11.3 million, and we hope to have this delivered by the end of 2029. So this, we finished up a traffic study, and the recommendation was roundabouts at all four of those ramp termini. Hopefully, that'll move traffic a little bit more efficiently in a safer manner. And we're still working on the concept report for that. And then Manchester Expressway at County Line Road, this is an interchange reconstruction. That's why the budget's a lot more than the other one, a little over $36.5 million. And it's a ban 3 project, so it's going to take a little bit longer to design, get right of way, get everything approved through Federal Highway Administration. And currently working on the traffic projections and environmental screenings. And we're hoping to have a concept team meeting in the near future to discuss this, which people, stakeholders in the Columbus will be invited to. Next, we have the University Avenue Project. This goes from Manchester Expressway to Macon Road. Total budget's $6 million. Hope to have it in construction by the end of 2026. What we're looking, the scope of this project was to reduce the road to two lanes with increased pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. So in meeting with the city and meeting with the Columbus State, we decided that maintaining the five-lane section north of the entrance would be beneficial to the school. They noted to us that especially during big events and everything, they need that extra capacity to get people in and out. So we're going to maintain pretty much what's there, north of the entrance up to Manchester. And then south of the entrance down to Macon Road, we're going to make it down to two lanes with a center turn lane and then bike lanes, maintaining the sidewalk so you'll have pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. We felt like this was the best option, given our budget and kind of what the needs of the project were. And working on the concept report for that as well. Next one is Andrews Road. This project and the next one, which is Brennan Road, we worked, we kind of lumped these two together because they're right next to each other, just kind of separated by Bull Creek. Both of them are very similar scopes. For Andrews Road, the budget's $6.8 million. Hope to have it delivered by the end of 2026. Intersection improvements, trail and sidewalk, that's pretty consistent with some of the other ones. We have approved the concept report, so we're in the preliminary design phase. And what we're looking to design is a 10-foot trail from Casita Road up to the railroad, which is about the midpoint of that picture. You can see the railroad running from left to right. And then after the railroad, a five-foot sidewalk from, to Buena Vista Road. We'll also include additional turn lanes at Clover, Alfred, and Casita. Still working on environmental screenings, and we hope to have a public meeting for this project and the next one early next year, somewhere in that neighborhood between Andrews and Brennan Road. And then Brennan Road, very similar scope. The budget on this one is $9.2 million. We estimate to deliver it at the same time as Andrews. The concept report's been approved for this one as well. Some aspects of it, we're going to do a 10-foot trail picking up at the existing roundabout on Casita Road going up to Aldridge. And that pretty much connects all of the residential facilities along this corridor. Then we'll connect a five-foot sidewalk going on up to Buena Vista Road. And still looking at environmental screenings, which we pretty much looked through all the way through design. And this project will be included in the same public meeting as Andrews Road. And these are the two projects that we are going to be advertising for a design contract. Williams Road, from 27 to 185, total budget's $18 and a, $18.7 million. This is a ban 3 project, so it'll be coming later on in the 10-year cycle. Doing widening intersection improvements. And Casita Road, from 10th Avenue to Fort Benin, $17.6 million, pretty much the same. Well, no, we're actually doing, looking at a three-lane typical. I believe this one is two lanes and five lanes in some sections. So we're going to be doing a three-lane typical intersection improvements bike ped. And both of these are going to be advertised in the spring for design contracts. And here's a list of all the projects that the Columbus is delivering. Kenneth mentioned that. They've been great partners in this program. It would be very difficult for our office to deliver all of these projects. And we're very grateful that y'all have been able to help us out with this. Did y'all want to give an update on any of these?
I'm in the last meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not involved in the day-to-day. But if y'all have any questions about this, my contact information's at the end of this presentation. And I'm sure Will and Vance would love to answer y'all's questions. And I'm sure Will and Vance would love to answer y'all's questions about it. And that's it. That's all we have.
Well, Kenneth, we appreciate y'all, appreciate your patience, too, waiting for us to get down there. But it is exciting what's been able to be accomplished. I think, I think TSPLOS program and TIA has delivered on what they've said they were going to do. They've sure helped us do some projects that otherwise wouldn't be done. So we appreciate y'all's help. And we'll thank Jim Livingston. He's with River Valley Regional Commission. He's here, too, and he was here to see the presentation.
Yes, I really want to thank you guys for coming and sharing this information. And as the public can see, if they're watching by television, and we've said it before, we've got a lot of work going on throughout Columbus, Georgia, between TIA One, Two, Sales Tax, Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, and Bund Projects. I mean, we've got, we've got projects all over this city, and they're spread out, not just in one area. I mean, literally, in north, south, east, and west, and I'm proud of that. But thank you for coming and sharing with us today.
Thank y'all. Sure appreciate it. Counselor Huff, I'm sorry.
Thank you all. I think it was Kenneth Franks and William Easton. Thank you both for being here, and our staff here, too, with you. But I've been a real proud recipient of a lot of these projects. The city manager and three of the state delegation was real instrumental in working with me on that I-185, Old Casita Road project, in getting Mount Pilgrim Church to come around and work with us, and they became big partners in the deal. And they are real happy with their new location and proud to be a part of development and opening up that area. And it was mentioned this morning that we have some affordable housing already coming to the area because of that. And I spoke with Jim Livingston Sunday night, and we had a little joke on the side, so he told me to let you know what was on my mind. The Spiderweb Project, something that's been going on all my life. So my mom was in the hospital in 2000, and I left the hospital to go home to change clothes. And I got caught by that train. I never got home to change clothes, and I had to return back to the hospital. But on a higher note, I told him that when I was 17 years old, I had a 1 o'clock curfew, and I got caught by that train, and I got benched. So I told him I wanted to thank you because this Spiderweb Project and putting a bridge over the railroad crossing will help future generation of teenagers to get home on time and not get in trouble. But on a personal note, the city manager has guided me so much. He, he, he's been real instrumental. We talk a lot, but he doesn't know how much I really talk around, away from him to others. He was so instrumental in helping me to understand when I first came in, this is how government works, this is what we can do, this is what we can't do. But this penny sales tax will be your freedom to get a lot of things done because the city just doesn't have the money to get it done. So thanks to him and his office, and thank you all for being here and look forward. I'm going to try to come up one day. I want to sit on the big board and spend some time with you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, next, we've got Columbus Multimodal Center update. We've got Alan Klein and Scott Allen with 2WR. We've got Metrofolk here, Rosa Evans, and she's going to introduce them, and they're up next.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Before we ask Mr. Alan Klein with 2WR to come forward, I just wanted to just mention briefly, Metro has so many projects that we're working on and we're excited about. But before he comes forward to talk about the multimodal center, I wanted to, they are going out the door, thank the TIA group for working with us, Mr. Kenneth Franks and William Easton on all of these projects. The most recent one completed was the Lynnwood Park and Ride. So if you haven't seen that one, where the old enrichment services building used to be, it is, it is a nice facility, a location with charging stations, electric charging stations, cameras, everything. It's beautiful. And I also wanted to update council. I did update in the council's referral on where we are with the comprehensive transit study. And that's something that I know Counselor Thomas and some others may have been inquiring about. We're getting closer. We're getting closer there. The RFP proposals are in. That process just took a little while, putting the bids out. But we're, we're at the point, finance, purchasing informed us that we're now ready to form the committee and move forward with the comprehensive study. The last comprehensive study was conducted in 2016, and then we had another transit assessment in 2018. So here we are again with another comprehensive transit study. And that, again, is TIA funding. It is going to, the company selected will look at all aspects of transit with Metro, our fixed route services, the ADA paratransit, the premium service that was recently approved by council, and microtransit, which is something that has been in discussion for a while, which is the on-demand service. What is the need? What is, what is it that we need to do different in Columbus? In addition to that, Brookstone Center. We know that service is needed into the Brookstone Center. So we're in support of it. We just can't just put it in there. We've got to go through the whole process, and the experts are going to come in and tell us what is needed, whether we need service in there every 30 minutes, whether we need it, you know, in the morning or in the evening. They're going to look at everything and, and hopefully make some changes that will enhance and improve the transportation here. One of my concerns that I'd like for them to look at is the hourly service. You know, I would like to see service more frequently on those routes where the demand is. Even though people plan their trips, if something happens and they miss a bus, that, that is an hour wait. So we want to look at all of that. So I won't go into it, but I just wanted to update you because Council Thomas is not here, but she will know that we're, we're getting ready to get the comprehensive study started. So now we'll ask Mr. Alan Klein to come up and talk to us a little bit about this state-of-the-art facility. I won't go into it. I'll let him explain it, something that we can look forward to in Columbus.
And this is TIA-funded as well?
This is TIA-funded?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't say that, but it is TIA-funded, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city manager, council, it's nice to meet you. First time here presenting in front of you all, but it's an exciting project that Rosa had brought us on board on. And basically, it is a Phase Two of Metro's Dragonfly Trail and Park and Drive type situation. Our lot is actually Phase Two, adjacent to the previously built Lynnwood Park and Ride area. We'll be providing an extension of the Metro campus, as well as tying into a future extension of the Dragonfly Trail, which will lead to the Metro Transfer Center. The overall scope of the project was to provide a building that would unify all the different modes of transportation for the city. So we could have bike rentals, we could have intercity bus drop-off, we could have Uber delivery, we could have a rideshare service, all within the same unified complex, which is also close to the Dragonfly Trail, which also gives you quick access to the Metro Transfer Center. Some of the design elements would also tie into the existing buildings. We're using some dark-colored gray brick, as well as some cement panels to replicate some of the cement coating finishes around, as well as a butterfly roof structure, which is made of a mass timber type of construction, which is taking some design elements from the mills around the city that are downtown. Also incorporating a bus drop-off lane for easy access, and continuing with some of the decorative wrought iron railing that is on the adjacent park-and-ride area. These are some additional views from the 9th Avenue approach headed towards Lynnwood. So you can see the bike storage area, which will also include a small service area for people who could come in, park their bike, keep it in a secure location. If they need to have some kind of minor service or repair done, they could do it in this location as well. That could be a local vendor providing that service, or the city could provide it themselves. This is another view showing the extent of the bike pavilion and service area. It is completely self-contained, solar-powered, invented, and secure. And it's a nice nighttime view of the building as you would approach it also on 9th Avenue. Any, any kind of questions or concerns?
It appears that looks good.
So the turn lane?
The construction documents are complete. This will be constructed fiscal year '25. We are under the allocated budget at this point.
Okay. Right. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Sure. No problem.
Mayor, that concludes my agenda today.
Counselor Hickey, did you have something?
Yeah, I just had a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. Sorry, sir, but we do have a camera, comprehensive camera update.
Yes, we do, but Counselor Hickey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I just had a question before we got off your agenda. You recall when we, we talked about a study being done to assist the disabled going from being dropped off at Cracker Barrel?
Brookstone.
Brookstone and driving?
Yeah, she just mentioned that.
She just, okay.
That's what she was talking about.
Okay, okay, that was just, so, okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Crabbe?
Mr. City Manager, could you also give us an update on the animal control and PAWS negotiations since Judy isn't here? I'm sure she would have asked.
Well, you know, I won't say much about it today, but we do, I do anticipate that being on my agenda for an update next week. And so if things go, if we can finish this week well, we'll have a, a presentation for Mayor and Council here at the meeting next week. We'll, we'll answer any of your questions. And, and then following that, between that meeting next week and the meeting in January, we will have either one or two public meetings to hear from them, the public, and then we hope to come back to you in January with a final presentation recommendation.
All right. Counselor Kogle?
I sent a couple of things over this past week, one being the lightning policy. Can we go ahead and move forward with the revised draft that the city attorney sent back for the Parks and, let's see, the revised draft, which basically, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney, had the indoor pools and the pool decks at the Columbus Aquatic Center closed for tornado warnings and basically leaving the lightning, the thunder and lightning, the thunder and lightning clause, when lightning and thunder is detected in the area, the facility manager, or in the event of a special event, the manager of that event shall make the determination of whether to continue normal operations, and then other severe weather events will be handled on a case-by-case basis. Can we go ahead and move forward with that?
So, Mr. City Attorney, do you have a final draft?
Yeah, that, that's the draft that was sent to everybody with the language she just read. I've got copies here, if y'all want them around the table.
Yeah, and...
The added provision is consistent with state law, which said, and state regs, which say each facility has to have a policy. You can pass it around.
Yeah, if it's a, if we can, once it gets passed around, if you want to take a quick look at it, if you didn't read the, the draft and the email, but I'd like to make a motion that that policy go, be put into place. Thank you.
So, City Attorney, you good with this?
Well, yes, it shifts responsibility somewhat to a third-party event manager. If they make the call
Okay.
on whether or not the event continues, then they may have to live with the consequences. That's why they should have insurance. Georgia Swimming or whoever it is better have plenty of liability insurance. But county immunity has not changed. Official immunity for the facility manager is not changed either.
And again, just for anybody that's watching, this is in reference to allowing the events that are happening at the indoor grounded pool at the Naterium or the Columbus Aquatic Center to continue during the event of a lightning or thunderstorm, rather than closing during those, those events, given that it is an indoor pool. And research has shown that nobody in the history of the world has ever been hit by lightning in an indoor grounded pool. So I think the risk is worth taking with this matter.
Well, and I, I know we've talked about this a bunch. I'm, I'm fine with it. I think if it gets us an opportunity to get some more meats, it's a good thing. I just wish we had something in writing from our people. I know we got something from Ryan, but from our Parks and Rec. If we may have gotten it, I didn't see it. Counselor Huff?
Yeah, that was my question. I'm all for competition and everything. I just wanted to make sure what the city attorney stated was true, that we are not on the hook. A third party has the liability part of this, because even though it's never happened before, if it ever happens, I just want to make sure it doesn't fall on the city of Columbus.
Well, I, you know, I, I yield to the city attorney. I've never witnessed a lawsuit involving a facility where we would have a resolution like this, that they didn't sue them and the city as well.
Yeah. If something happens, if something happens and somebody's hurt, you can bet that everybody involved, including the third-party event manager, Georgia Swimming or whoever it is, they're all going to be named in a claim. But this policy does not change county immunity, which protects the county purse or the official immunity of the facility manager that works for the city.
Okay, there is a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion to the motion? All right, hearing, and I don't guess we can put this on the screen, so.
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that passes.
And then the, the other matter that I, I know I sent earlier this week was a resolution involving the, the farmer's market and the, the desire to have the farmer's market turn into soccer fields for, to be operated in sort of the, the same manner as, I guess, or... into soccer fields for, to be operated in sort of the same manner as, I guess, or not to be, or to be oversaw by the Columbus Football League. And we can bring it back next week, but it's, I've done a little bit more research, and I know that some of the email traffic that came back and forth was whether or not that that could be used for recreational purposes. And I know that in 2020, the city acknowledged, I think there was some conversation between, maybe it was the food mill and U-Gro, and one of the provisions was that that footprint would be used for Parks and, or Parks and recreational facilities. And so I'd just like to have that discussion further and have that on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
So, yeah, Mayor, we can, we need to make clear, I know we use some CDBG federal dollars in conjunction with that property, and we use some brownfield dollars, and we just need to look at what restrictions or payback requirements, if we don't do something consistent with what CDBG will require we do with that property. So we can, we can have that update, we can talk about it today, or we can talk about it next week, share that, but.
If there's any information along those lines, we probably need to get it distributed to council, and then we'll.
Sure, we can do that, and then we can certainly put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, look, I know that there's probably some history. They're talking using it for public purposes and recreation, but, I mean, you can go online and see what those funds are, there's several different things you can use those funds for, and public and recreational purposes are listed. But, look, I, I like the idea, because we've been dealing with this for almost 15-plus years, just too many, what I call too many cows out in the pasture, okay? But we've been looking for places for our children to play, and when you start thinking about it and breaking it down, that's a wonderful place to be able to have an opportunity along with, along with some of our other new aspects of professional soccer or minor league soccer and things like that, just having the resources there. And I always look at this stuff from my perspective, and being a former athlete, professional athlete, that, you know, there's no better crime prevention, and certainly in that area, giving kids an opportunity that just can't get to Woodrow Farm or other places is, is a great option and can do a lot. And we talk about this all the time, Mayor, but, look, you think about uptown, you get a lot of people down there, and they just want to go places that they can enjoy green space and activities and things like that, and, and it just kind of goes along. I know the pickleball, now this, things like that. Having an opportunity, if it's used multipurpose, where they can go with their, you know, and play with their kids and do different things and have events, and, and I'm sure there's probably going to be a correlation with the, these professional leagues too, that might, that, that might, you know, play out in, in the future. But anyway, that's my thoughts.
Counselor Kogle?
Sorry, I didn't mean to turn my mic off, but, yeah, just to reiterate Counselor Davis's comment about the youth sports, we have a, I think, last, last time I checked, I think at Woodrow Farm, we had about a 250 kid waitlist that was going on, and I know that those fields are overused and underpaid, so to speak, and the, you know, this is not, I mean, it is, it is nice for the, the opportunity to have another green space in, in this particular footprint, but it does also, I'm reminded when Ambassador Smirey was here earlier, talking about A.J. McClung Stadium and some of your comments earlier about renovating A.J. McClung, and if we're talking about widening, potentially widening that for soccer as well as for football, and renovating that, this is a very nice complement to this footprint in, and, and expanding that, that sports and entertainment type of footprint. And it, I mean, it does also spill into South Columbus and provides an area that is a little bit closer to South Columbus to play soccer, rather than having to drive all the way out to Woodrow Farm. So it serves a lot of the community, and it will be a great asset to, to both that particular footprint, as well as to South Columbus and to a lot of the youth that are in the area.
All right. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to note too, and some of you on council you don't remember, but the history, you need to really understand the history of that piece of property. Hal Avery was involved. Hal Avery had a dream, and Hal Avery had some wishes, and it was going in that direction. Well, what's being proposed and what's being talked about is right what he saw that land could be utilized for. And anyway, I just wanted to remind everybody about that. You can go back and take a look at how all this started, how we got to this point and acquired the property from the state, but he was very instrumental in seeing this through. And I know there's still some, some aspect of some of his dreams that's out there, but that's important to remember.
So with that, Mayor, I do have one additional update that I almost, I'm sorry, that's City Manager Goodwin, but the camera update.
Okay. They will put that up. Okay, and I will not be long on this, want to just share with you where we are with the comprehensive camera that we started some time back. We have three phases in this project, and Phase One, installation of course, was complete last year sometime, which included 2,371 cameras and mostly Parks and Recreation areas. Phase Two, with 821 cameras, is also complete, and we have just a couple in Public Works and throughout the sheriff's offices and their areas of protection that we are still working on, and so they are almost complete. But that Phase Two, of course, included the Civic Center, Public Safety Center, Columbus Fire and EMS Health Department, and then of course, Public Works and the sheriff's office. Phase Three was 645 cameras. Installation for that is also complete, included Metro, Public Works, the Civic Center, and the Trade Center, and so we will be complete with Phases One, Two, and Three by the end of this month. Mobile cameras were provided, 20 each, to the Police Department and to Public Works. Police Department for their high-crime areas, and they will determine where those cameras will go, how often they will be moved, and then of course, the same thing with the illegal dumping cameras that we provided to Public Works, and they also receive 20. And all of those cameras are out and about in various areas, and they will be moved periodically, and so I'll tell you that we've made a lot of cases, illegal dumping cases with these cameras. These are just some of the areas and some of the fines that have been, you know, allotted to these particular areas. And so I will let you know also that we have, I have names of individuals, and some of those individuals have repeat offenders, not listed here, but again, these are the various cases that we're dealing with, but Lake Shore Drive, we have an individual who has been fined three times for the same person for illegally dumping in that particular area. And so again.
And what, do you know, were there penalties?
Yes.
Was he jailed, or?
There were.
I think on the third offense, it probably should be put in jail.
A thousand dollars and $500 fines for three occurrences, so, and for this particular individual, which I have names for all of these. We have another one, Fortson Industrial Boulevard is one of those, again, repeat offenders. This one person continues to dump in that particular area, and they have been fined $1,500.
So they got caught three times?
They got caught three times.
But they probably dumped more.
Probably, but they just got caught those three times. So these, again, are repeat offenders in these particular areas. Forsite, Forsite Street, another individual has been fined for and with three occurrences. And so again, repeat offenders. I have a whole list, you know, page and a half here, but of course, we have more. This is just.
Why can't we take those repeat offenders and sentence them to community service out in the landfill?
I think we just need to work with the, with the judge and see what we can do. I mean, absolutely, yeah, I agree with that, but.
Are these businesses?
These are individuals that have our dumping, the names that I have. I don't know if they're part of the, you know, what business they're in.
They're probably doing some kind of business.
So they're probably, are associated with a business, because of course, we have some that with tires, you know, so you know that's what kind of company that is, and some other things. And so we can dig a little deep in that, deeper, get with the judge and recordist court and see what we can do, because, yeah, we have to deal with this. Our community has to deal with this. And so that's why we're coming forward, and these cameras are doing what they're supposed to do. And so that is why we know that we got to do more. We need more of these cameras. You know, what we want to do is purchase additional cameras, so that we can have some on standby, so that instead of, because what we have to do with the mobile cameras is install the poles. We, we have to install our own poles. We have to purchase our own poles, and so when we're ready to move these cameras, we don't want to have to move a pole. We want to have additional poles already in inventory that we can just go put up where it's needed. And then of course, for a full set of a camera, a camera set, which includes the pole, which includes two cameras per pole, it also includes the solar panels, the battery, all of those things. It's about $20,000, a little over $20,000 for one complete set. And so what we want to do in the next upcoming budget, in the FY26 budget, is continue to put in enough money that we have, we're able to fund some cameras, the entire set, you know, in inventory. So if that means, you know, five sets or 10 sets each budget, whatever that number is, we'll have them, so that if the police department need mobile cameras, or if, you know, Public Works need additional cameras. But the other thing that we want to do in FY26, keep in mind that for Carver Park, that's the only park, because of the issues that we had there, is the only park where there are cameras throughout the park. The other areas have cameras on the buildings and on the interior of the buildings. What we need to do is to get to the point, particularly now that we're getting ready to open up the new pools, you know, for next summer, we need cameras at Rigdon and at Solomon Road, Shirley Winston, Flat Rock, you know, Cooper, we need those, where those high-activity areas are, we need to have cameras throughout those parks. And so we're going to be looking at what that cost will be to budget, and I have IT right now, working with our contractor to determine what that number would look like, so that we can at least start putting these cameras in throughout the park, and not just on the buildings, but throughout. And so those are the particular areas that we want to, and then of course, we'll phase in more parks, more areas each budget year. So that's what we're looking at for FY26. So that's where we are.
Good deal. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, one of the things that we have been discussing is, I guess you would say, the lack of clarity at times due to, I guess, the diminished coverage, or just say out at Shirley B., you're out there, you probably got like one on your, like Verizon or whatever. Are we addressing some of those issues?
You mean, in terms of the camera, the clarity of the camera?
The clarity, and then I guess the net, network connectivity is, is kind of degraded.
Yeah, we are, we have worked that problem. We figured out what the issue was specifically for Shirley Winston, and I think we've, I think they've gotten that taken care of. I'll find, I'll confirm, but I believe that has been taken care of.
I just use Shirley B. as one of the issues, because when you stand all the way, when you stand all the way by the baseball, that's when we was having some of the issues of, I guess it was having kind of like low connectivity, so of course.
That's why you have, you have to put, depending on the area, so many per feet, you know, that's just in order to get the highest definition of, of that coverage. It's just like what we have on Chatsworth Road, you know, it's the, the long stretch, that's about a seven mile, it's a long stretch, but we only have, you know, a camera out there. Excuse me?
We're not going to tell everything.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, we only have, you know, so many cameras out there. We know that we need more.
Bottom line is we're working on it.
Right, we need more, and so I can just say, we have identified that we're getting ready to place more in that particular area, based on the mayor's protest.
It was really like the network coverage, to make sure that.
Yeah, you're gonna see, you're gonna see a rise in issues out there.
Tell it all.
Tell them folks we can't see it.
Well, but, well, we can see them, though. I mean, and, and especially because it wasn't just at Shirley B., it was at Carver Park too. But we can see them, because we saw that individual who dumped that jacuzzi, had to at Carver Park, so we definitely can see you. It's just that the bandwidth, like, we still need to address that regardless.
We'll, we'll look at that, I think we have.
Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Goodwin, one, one of my concerns and some of the calls that I've been getting from my constituents is the location between St. Mary's Road and Honolulu Drive, that when you come down past the fire station, when you get around there by the condos around there, I mean, it's constantly being littered there and everything, and then over on Far Oaks between.
Far Oaks, oh, yeah.
Yeah, and so I know you may mention, I think it's a great idea that we do get with the judges and the courts, because I think, one additional thing that need to be taken into consideration as far as a form of, of, I know that we're fining people, but if we see that people are littering from their cars, we need to be talking about suspending their registration on their vehicles, because, you know, I mean, not from that first time that they litter, but if it's an ongoing thing and we got a record of it, maybe we need to start talking about suspending their, their registration, if not also, like you said, Mr. City Manager, you know, maybe, you know, incarceration to some point, you know, because I drove through there Sunday going to church to go, to get on to 185, and I just saw trash that had been in the roadway and spilled over into people's yards that, that are well-manicured and everything, and it's, it's like somebody just coming through there and just taking a bag of trash and just dumping it in the road.
Well, that's exactly what they're doing.
Yeah, and then the cars are running over it, and then of course, it's, it's just going everywhere, and, and it just makes a neighborhood look so bad.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we can go out there and pick it up today.
And, and it'll be, tomorrow, be the same thing.
So those are the issues that we're having.
So, so if, I, I don't know whether or not we can get some cameras over that way, those two locations, Far Oaks and.
Far Oaks is definitely on the list, I know.
Between North Oakley and Honolulu and Steammill Road, I mean, St. Mary's Road, you know, round there where, where the condos are and stuff, you know, if we can get some assistance out there, I know, I know that my constituents will greatly appreciate it, because it's, it's, it's just crazy. It's, it's, you know, but like you said, you can clean it up, man, then next.
Two days later.
It's bad, so we'll be putting it back in, we'll be putting it in the upcoming budget, so we need your assistance.
Counselor Davis?
Great news for a, great news and a solution for a reoccurring problem, and I just got back from Mobile, and I don't know what they're doing, but they have upped their game. I went all over Mobile and it was clean. You could tell that they had been working, they had been doing something, because usually you go to these bigger cities and it's not like that, but that's the first thing I noticed, you know, when I go in there. I mean, my eye goes right, right to it, and that's the business I'm in, you know, you gotta, you gotta keep things, you gotta keep things where they need to be, clean, you know, and, and I like this, if we can do, I mean, why wait till 2026? I mean, I'm just saying, you got my approval? We need these cameras, I mean, we talked. We need these cameras. I mean, we talked about a situation today and you can move them around, right? You move some of these cameras around.
Oh, yeah, they're mobile.
And I like, and they're stealthy too, right?
Yes.
Well, it's like to be able to tell people, you know, you better be careful what you're doing and dumping because you never know. Those cameras may be watching you.
We're catching them.
And it's automatic, you know, we talk about, it's automatic. Thousand dollar fine, isn't it? No tolerance?
Well, up to a thousand.
Up to a thousand. They've been doing five hundred.
There's one habitual offender that has paid fifteen hundred, that means twice, only paid five hundred.
I thought we did a no tolerance. The council did a no tolerance.
About a thousand dollars, yeah, yeah.
If they're caught.
Yeah, that's right.
And these cameras. So I mean, if that's what it takes, it's a great solution.
We need to go to the max.
Well, I went to a court and Judge Henderson fined him a thousand dollars. I went and stood there. She fined him a thousand dollars.
I think that's, you know, we took, we take it serious. I mean, to, to that level, but you can, I guess, Mr. City Manager. Can we, you know, you just, I just asked you about the, the matter with the signs and all. I mean, can we put them up and find people as well, right?
Okay.
I mean, you never know who's going to be watching you these days.
Absolutely.
We'll find it. All right, Counselor Hickey?
Just one, one last thing, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Goodwin, is there possible that in that, in those areas that I just mentioned? That we can get the no littering signs put up to possibly help as a deterrent?
We can do that.
And then also over our Forest Road, going into Regency Park, you know where they just built the new service station and that? That's Regency Drive. Get a couple of signs along that, that area too. I had some, some of my constituents to talk to me about that as well, if I can do that.
Dead end area back there where, yeah, I know exactly where it's at.
You know, coming along the road.
We'll have engineering to look at those areas for the signs.
Okay, awesome, awesome. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the Clerk's Agenda, item one is a resolution changing the council meeting schedule for the month of January twenty twenty-five.
Motion second to approve. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? All right.
And Mr. Mayor, just briefly want to go over that schedule.
Yes, please.
That would be for January twenty twenty-five. January seventh would be a nine o'clock AM. January fourteenth, that meeting would be canceled, has been canceled. January twenty-first, there is no meeting. And January twenty-eighth is a five thirty PM meeting. And we will have these meeting dates listed on our website. Item number two is a resolution excusing Counselor Garrett.
All right, motion second to excuse Counselor Garrett. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, it's approved.
Yes. Item number three is a resolution excusing Counselor Thomas from today's meeting.
Motion and a second to approve Counselor Thomas's absence. And all in favor, say aye. Any, any opposed? All right, that's approved.
Item four is an email correspondence from the airport director, Ms. Clark. She's submitting the selection of the airport commission of Mr. Philip Badcock. To succeed Mr. Carl Rose Jr. And he may be confirmed.
Motion and a second to confirm. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, he's confirmed. Amber, you got some staying power. Thank you for sticking around. Well, thank you what you're doing out at the airport as well.
Item five is an email correspondence from Mr. Monty Galbret. He's submitting his resignation from the Valley Partnership Joint Development Authority. To become effective Janu- December twentieth, I'm sorry.
Motion second to receive with regrets. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right.
Six are minutes of various boards to be received.
Is there a motion to receive the minutes? All right, there's a motion and a second to receive the minutes. All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, they're, they are received.
Next, we have board appointments. We have councils confirmation. These are nominations that are received from an organization or agency. For the Uptown Facade Board, Liba Dillon and Nikki Giedroich. The Columbus, Uptown Columbus Inc. as well as Uptown Business Improvement District are recommending they be confirmed to serve another term. And for the seat of Debbie Young, they are recommending Fran Hall for this, for her, for the seat of Debbie Young. And they all may be confirmed.
They may, they can be confirmed today?
Sir?
You said they?
Yes, yes, they all may be confirmed today.
There's a motion to confirm Ms. Dillon and Ms. Young. There's a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They're confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. For the Personnel Review Board, we have the seat of Dennis Walsh. This is the alternate member one seat. Mr. Willie Bellfield Jr. This is the alternate member two seat. And Donna D. Baker, alternate member three seat. All are open for nominations. Next, we have upcoming board appointments. The Historic and Architectural Review Board. The organization makes the recommendation and council confirms. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and Ms. Nicole, I think you reserved. Sure.
Thank you. Can you give me an update on the swearing in of the, the animal control board? We had two members that we voted in and I've heard that they haven't been sworn in yet.
That is correct. They have not been sworn in. We have provided that information as we typically do to the mayor's office to schedule those oaths. And so I, I haven't heard anything different from that.
I didn't even know they were waiting on them. We can check on them.
Yeah, could we do that right away? Thanks.
Thank you.
When were they turned in, Sandra?
I'm sorry?
When were they passed on to my office?
Give me just a moment. I'll have the deputy clerk check the dates of when it was submitted to the mayor's office. November twenty-sixth, Mr. Mayor. That list for oaths was sent to the mayor's office.
Okay, we'll get those done and get them over back to your office. All right.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, you can ask a question. Counselor Co. That's Klaus, Counselor. All right.
Can, can you verify whether or not the pause contract will be on the agenda for next week?
I think.
Mayor, I think she was out.
I think I stepped out, sorry. Sorry, that was my fault, my fault, sorry.
But he's going to bring it up.
I accept full responsibility.
Well, let's finish.
Well, you know, so we will not have a contract on the agenda next week. What we, I plan to do. If we can get it finished up this week, have an update for the mayor and council on Tuesday. Hear your questions and expressions. And then between this meeting on the seventeenth and the January meeting, I know it's the holiday season. But hope to schedule either one or two public meetings to present to them what we've presented to council and get their input. And then when we come back in January, we will be able to share with you what we brought, what we heard from you, mayor and council, what we heard from the public. Hear any adjustments or changes we've made based on what we heard. And, and then that would be the final document we would be presenting for consideration at that time.
Good, thank you. Mr. Co.
That's, that's the plan and let's, something happens.
Mr. Co.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to say thank you all for the opportunity to present the concerns and thank you for the solutions that were mentioned that are in place. It is truly appreciated. It was through a fellow citizen that I learned that I could contact my counselor and get help with the school zone concerns. However, her experience was different from mine. So while she was able to say thank you and everything was taken care of quickly, we're still waiting. And this is the end of July for crosswalks. So I would just ask that if it's possible, that things are done fairly across the board. I do not live in the district. I work in the district. I have a small business there, but I care about it just the same. And the concerns that I have to bring to my counselor in that district, I do not have to bring to my counselor where I live. And so I would just like to be seen fair across the board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Before we go, I just wanted to take this moment to update everybody. I think a lot of my colleagues already have been filled in on the loop. And we've been talking about it. But if y'all remember, you know, during the budget session, we talked about some things dealing with park patrols, okay? And we talked about looking at options and talking to various members of law enforcement across the board. And we have done that. Many of us have done that. I think recently, you know, we've had several problems happening in districts, whether it's Rigdon or Shirley Winston or Carver or Double Churches. Most recently, I know y'all got an email. I sent it out to everybody about what happened at Britt David, you know, about the vandalism there. And the continuance of whether there's people who are camping there and causing problems across the board. It just seems like, you know, we need to come up with a solution. We have talked to the sheriff and mayor. I'm going to ask whether on your agenda or on the city attorney's agenda. That the sheriff come and talk to us about a program dealing with the park patrol unit that he has conceptually put together. I think it's a great idea and, and dealing with some of these issues that we have. But not only that, from a crime prevention, crime suppression and being able, just the intel and the information and working with all the other units. I think it'd be an enhancement in our community overall to, to coming up with a solution and dealing to reduce the numbers in, in crime in some of these areas. And a lot of it is happening in our parks. And, you know, just the idea of having somebody you can call. And somebody you can call right then and there, somebody who can put plans together, somebody who can do it twenty-four seven. All the way around the clock, seven days a week, at any time, put operations together to deal with these kind of things. And, and at the same time, work with all the other crime suppression units that, that are out there. I, I think it's going to be a valuable asset. So I'm just, you know, kind of letting everybody know that. I've asked the sheriff if he'll come do a presentation. Certainly when you do things like this, there's cost involved. And it would take a budgetary amendment to make it happen. But I like the idea and I've asked him to come and present it to everybody next week. If, if possible, if we can put it on your agenda or city attorneys, whatever's appropriate.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. Anything else needs to come before, oh, Counselor Kogle, are you?
Oh, no.
Delete.
I did have one question. Ms. Natalie had brought up the mowing, like the mowing schedule. We normally approve a contractor. Is that annually that we do for? Well, no, not private property, but just mowing our right of ways? Is it, is it annually that we do that?
Oh, sorry.
We still new on the system.
Yeah, well, so I, I did hear her mention private property owners and the overgrown business owners. And so I heard a couple of different things from her. And so you heard that. And then of course, we do have right of way. And we mow, we say three times a year, you know, because we just don't have the resources. And I heard the deputy city manager say four to six weeks. It's more like three times a year, four times a year. And, you know, Columbus is two hundred and twenty square miles, a hundred and forty-one thousand acres. And, you know, we have, you know, a couple of thousand miles of road. And so we, we don't have the resources to mow, you know, when, when you mow your grass at home, and I heard her very well. You know, you can't, if you go two weeks without mowing your lawn during the rainy season, your lawn is out of control. Especially if you have weed. And so just think about that. You can't go two weeks at your own house. But we are talking three times a year on right of way or every four to six weeks. It's out of control. And so we, you know, and, and we can't, our gateway contract is for the, the gateways, the interchanges. And, you know, certain buildings and grounds, like the government center. And, and, and we spend a million dollars, two, one and a half million a year on gateways. A, a lot. And so we recently added fire stations to gateways, for example. And we added, we were going to add the municipal court, excuse me, not municipal court, but recorders court building to gateways. We can't afford to add all of the right of way to gateways. We, we just could not afford that. And so we're probably going to have to invest in more people if we want to, and, and more equipment if we want to mow on a more regular basis. I mean, we just have to invest.
Yeah, is that something that we can look at for the upcoming budget cycle?
I'd love to, I'd love to.
I just think that, and I, I agree, sometimes we go to certain areas and it's, and it's an eyesore. However, you know, I go to certain communities because, you know, we all travel different states. And you see it dressed right, dressed like you're on a military installation. And then we've got some large military installations too. And I know their budgets are different, but when you go onto the military installation, you don't see all this overgrown. It's, it's nicely manicured, but they got military young soldiers.
They got a budget that we can't, we can't, we can't compete with.
We can't beat.
Compete with, yeah.
But I, I really would, would like to see us take a, a real good effort in this next budget cycle. For us to really do amazing when it comes to how we present to, to the world.
We might could come up with a work program.
I, I mean, I like the notion that we want to, to do more to address it. And I know we go to other communities. But what I try and do is get off the beaten path, you know, because I mean, they know where people.
Yeah, the main, the main travel.
And they, they manicure that. And, but I, I hear you and I, I share your concern.
Yeah, and here's the deal. I hate to sound like the sixty-five-year-old Medicare-eligible guy I am, but when I was fifteen, when I was fifteen. My dad used to make me go cut the median, which was public right of ways. Because neighbors took care of that stuff. People that lived in a certain area, didn't matter where they live, people just, my week, my turn. And I'm going to get out there and try to clean it up. A city government, no government can spoon feed every single service that's out there. And I'm not criticizing the people that are saying it all. I'm just saying that if everybody would take their own initiative to do just a little, small.
A little extra.
We wouldn't have these problems.
I mean, we, we did it in our subdivision because we were used to that growing up. And, you know, Ms. Rosa was here from Metro. And I remember on Carver Street, the, one of the bus stops was right in front of my grandparents' house. And we made sure that if somebody was coming to that, that bus stop, they, they didn't have to stand in no high grass.
That's how we used to do it, yeah.
It was nice and it felt like carpet when you stood out there at that bus stop. And we took pride, you know, in our communities. And I think that's, that's part of this, you know, and I'm happy that we have Keep Columbus Beautiful. But pushing more of a campaign where we can go out and, you know, in the communities and kind of educate them, just do a little extra. We did a little extra, ended up buying the extra lot.
Absolutely.
Because we kept cutting it. We said, this is our lot.
If there was a lot next to you, you would go ahead and mow that too.
And, and bought it. And we cut it enough and we cleaned it and we got it for a thousand dollars because the man said, y'all keeping it clear for me.
But you got, yeah, but you're right. I got you.
But let's work on that this time. Thank you.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Another suggestion is replacing the grass with maybe a low, a low ground cover that doesn't need to be maintained. Little bit at a time, we could be. Little bit at a time, we could be replacing the grass with that ground cover. And then there, it's very low maintenance.
Yeah. If you've been talking to my wife, that's what she's wanting to do with our yard. Counselor Davis?
Mayor, I might have been traveling when Ms. Leatherwood sent us all a email. I'm just gonna remind, remind you and others. I know, it, it just pop, when the young lady came up and talked about the crosswalks and things, it just, I don't think we've addressed that yet.
Here we have. I've called Vance, and Vance is working on it and he's pulling together some information so we can meet with her.
And I need to get over there and see what we've done. I don't know if we've done things along the road. What, what is that, American, not American way?
I forget the name.
Oh, gosh.
Patriot, anyway, but it's-
Again, I'm having a senior moment, but the, the road there, uh, you know, she does have some concerns, but I remember specifically her asking that, uh, we get together and I didn't, I haven't seen if we've addressed that or not.
No, I'll, we'll, I'll include you on the email. Vance is pulling, our engineering department's pulling together some solutions.
And I plan to give her a call as well.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Counselor Hickey?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I won't be long, but I, 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 I was thinking here just a moment ago, when I was young, we had a program here in Columbus called CYO.
Yeah.
Columbus Youth Opportunity.
I worked it.
You remember, you're, you're aware of that. And I think Bruce, you probably worked in that too, in that program. And, and, you know, we often talk about, you know, uh, the crime in the city, young people not having anything to do. I just think for the summer months, you know, we just probably want to consider, you know, um, bringing these, some young people in that want to work, uh, and, and, and want to work with Public Works. Maybe we can, you know, do a public-private thing with some of the private businesses here in town uh, who, who, who need their lawns cut and they can be supervised by someone from our Public Works Department. And, and we can employ these young folks that want to work and give them something to do, uh, to earn some money over the summertime. And then also, you know, that way it'll keep them off the streets hopefully and giving them something positive to do. So I would love to see something like that come back, you know, to the city.
We've done that for about the last four years. Uh, last year we had a hundred and twenty-five kids.
Awesome.
Uh, but they're not really out working. They've been placed in government buildings and places doing interior, internal work.
I, I, I like to see them out there sweating like we was sweating.
I got it. We're done.
But I, I, I would just love to see something like that. And also, Mr. City Manager, I just got one, one other request. You know, I had brought up in, at the council meeting for, uh, Fort Progressive Funeral Home on St. Mary's Road about that crosswalk that they was asking for to the property across the street because with their overflow, I would just want to get an update on that, see where we were.
I don't have one, but that follow-up.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. All right. Any other business needs to come before the council? Motion second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.